All right, if you may all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Do you remain standing Heather Riley? Please, if you can give us our invocation as our police chaplain.
God of all creation. First, let me say thank you. On behalf of all who are gathered here today, thank you for your abundant blessings, thank you for life itself and for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thanks for our freedom. We thank you for our community and all who serve it, for those who teach and who protect, those who clean and who repair, those who work in parks and work on roads, those who plan and make the plans happen, those who heal and who counsel, those who govern and who elect, for all who live into the best example of what it means to be a citizen. In the scriptures you have said that citizens ought to honor the governing authorities since you have established them to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for our various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our time. A sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and joy in their tasks. May God reign in the agenda set before you today that it would benefit those who live, work, and play in our beloved city of Santa Ana. Make us great in your mighty and majestic name and all God's people said. Amen.
Thank you. You may be seated. I'm gonna call on Mayor Protem Martinez.
It's a great honor today, this evening, I'm actually doing a proclamation. Mark Laurent, who worked assistant to the city manager and actually helped with council services in my 11 years, but has had a long career here in the city of Santa Ana. So after 24 years of service, Mark Laurent retired from the city of Santa Ana on July 5th. He first started in the city as a public works, in the public works agency, and it was great to hear the story at his retirement party, how he was late and how he's late here again. Something's never changed, Mark. And then was promoted to the city manager's office where he worked for 16 years. And I shared my story at his retirement party and how I first met Mark. I was a Parks and Rec Commissioner for the city before I got elected to the Santa Ana City Council. And I always saw Mark, you know, either getting his shoes shined with candy or at the Italian restaurant, and everyone would always want to speak to him, he was always shaking hands, I was like, man, who is this dude? And certain enough, you know, no and behold, you know, he's assistant, you know, to the city manager and really providing council services to the city council. Essentially, when the residents would give us a call or send us an email, guess who would we give that information to to help us deal with those issues? Mark Lawrence. So he's the guy that has made us look wonderful for all these years, and I could, you know, testify beyond just our assistants up there at city hall who he was responsible for, but he did some amazing things. And what I can tell you is that he was able to work with the staff. And that is important because a lot of times, the residents and the business community think that we just can call our public works director or call, you know, our police chief or our Parks and Rec Director and, hey, go do this. We actually have a process, we actually have to go through the city manager's office and then go through Mark and then, you know, get some of those issues that come before this city council address. And so, he essentially has been that person for us and specifically on a lot of our special projects for the city council. So it's been an honor, you know, Mark, working with you directly to help, you know, shape the lives here of the residents and the business community here in this city. And I wanted to recognize, you know, Mark here today and really proclaim and do something very special for him, to commit this amount of time, and believe me, it's not easy working on the eighth floor, not always easy working with council members, right? We all have different personalities, we all have different issues, we all have different projects, but to be able to navigate not only through the eighth floor but also navigate through the various departments, that's not easy. I know we work with Julie now, and certainly Julie could attest, and Jorge, you know, it's a daunting task at times. For us, it's real easy to send an email, hey Julie, I need you to take care of this, or hey, Ms. City Manager, can you please, you know, do X, Y, and Z, and then we kind of kind of get out of the way and then they then have to move forward with the work. So it's not as easy as I'm saying it. And so, thank you, Mark, for your dedication, not only to the city manager's office and the staff up there, but to the city council and more importantly, to the residents of this community who definitely have respected you over all these years and also the business community. Before I provide this proclamation, I'm not sure if there's any members of the city council that'd like to say something, and then would like to hear from you, Mark.
Well, I wanted to say something. I wanted to thank you Mayor Protem for doing this for Mark, and, you know, we could probably designate this month as Mark Lawrence Month, and we could probably erect a statue to him, and that still wouldn't be enough, right? Mark's been around the city for so long, and he's somebody who came up through the organization. And I had the blessing of knowing Mark before I came on the city council, and I knew his brother who was on the bankruptcy circuit with me as young attorneys. But Mark is just probably one of the most quality people that this organization's ever, you know, brought through. And Mark always had a kind word for everybody, he treated everybody the same, and that was probably one of his best assets, which was, you know, he would deal with people who had very large businesses in town, very large developments, and he dealt with residents who were very humble and, you know, and maybe monolingual Spanish speakers, but Mark was the same way with everybody. And so, I don't remember anybody ever saying a bad thing about Mark, and, you know, by the looks of him, he's, you know, retirement's treating him pretty well. I thought maybe he was gonna come back in a suit and say, well, look, will you guys take me back? But he looks way too relaxed, man, so, you know, but I just wanted to thank him. And one thing, I'm not gonna embarrass you much longer, and even though he went to SC, that's okay, you know, we'll forgive him for that. But, you know, Mark, when he would, you know, if you saw his desk, he had a huge desk, and he'd have papers all over the desk, and you could barely see the wood because he'd have stacks of, you know, different items that he was working on for constituents. But when Mark would get really frazzled, and I knew, sometimes when I'd walk into his office and I'd peek my head in, he's very, very fair-skinned, but when he would get nervous, he'd get super red. So when I saw that red hue on his face, man, I beelined out of there because I realized he was under the gun. But, Mark, you're gonna be missed. Thank you on behalf of all the residents for the great work you've done over the years and for being patient with all of us and for lending your talents to this city. Thank you, Mark.
Jose?
Yes. So I've known Mark now for a number of years, you know, then and now, and he's, you know, he's the real public servant. I mean, he's the real deal, shows up on time, even after the many years, wouldn't take advantage of, you know, long breaks or lunches or vacations, was always there doing his work, a very, very loyal staffer. And as Councilmember Sarmiento was saying, really loved by a lot of members in the community, whether they were English speakers or Spanish speakers. I know one of my very good friends, Roberto Laurean, has such a fondness that he would call him Marcos. His name is Mark, but, you know, finally known as Marcos by him, and whether the request was big or small, Mark was always there to help him and others. And then there were some very memorable fun events, including the government relations there that he had a lot of responsibility for. So, some years ago, when we hosted Mexican President Fox in the downtown, Mark was a big part of making that event successful and safe. Also, we had George W. Bush at the Bowers Museum, and Mark was a big part of that. But at the end of the day, whether you're an elected or someone in the community, you know, what you want from your electeds or your government staffers is follow-up, you know, at least if somebody calls or emails, you know, make a real effort to get back to them and provide a response, and for that, you know, you get an A+ in my book, and I don't give many people an A+. So, thank you so much for your service, and we wish you well.
Mark, you're in a class all by yourself. You are gold. I've told you that many times. All the knowledge, all your experience, thank you for being patient with me as a new council member, take it to heart, all your advice, all those talks we had, you know, I just appreciate your help very, very, very much. You know, we had that long talk before your last day, so, you know, I don't wanna take everyone's time, but, you know, you, I wish you were still with us, you know, but please come on back, you're always welcome, you know that. Thank you, Mark.
Chris, thank you Juan. So before I end and I provide this proclamation, Mark, please do give us a couple of your words.
Okay. Well, extremely humbled, humbled to be recognized by the Marin City Council. I love this community. People ask me, how's retirement? Retirement is great, because I'm doing a lot of things that I've been putting off for years, but I really do miss this community, and I miss my colleagues, my staff, and the Marin City Council. So, I got a heavy heart about this community, and I hope to be back in some way, some fashion down the road, in the community and seeing if I can continue to help. I just really want to thank the mayor and the city council from the bottom of my heart for all their support over the years, and of course, Mayor Protem Martinez, Councilmember Solorio, Councilmember Vegas Benavides, of course, Councilmember Sarmiento, and Councilmember Tinejero, who have all been wonderful to work for. And I just want to congratulate them for their vision and their leadership, because it's a tough job what they have. And so, I just want to recognize all of you. And I want to recognize the city staff for helping me be successful, and last but not least, my colleagues, the executive managers, the executive management team, city manager, city attorney, city clerk, and Jorge Garcia, and Julie Castro, and the other fine folks in the city manager's office. So with that, I just thank you.
Great, thanks, Mark, and I told, let's give him a round of applause. One of the things since, you know, prior to me getting elected and what I did for a living, I was a human resource director for eight years for a company called Go Coast Baking Company, who we knew, who was my father figure, was the owner of that company, was very involved in this city. His name was Mark Press, like printing press. And, you know, as I look back and I think of, you know, at 21, being an HR Director for a major company here in the city of Santa Ana, and realizing that what's important is its people. I always tell folks that, yes, buildings are beautiful and they're great, but what makes cities beautiful, what makes cities thrive, it's its people. Not only our residents, but the employees in this city. And I tell my colleagues I'm equal opportunity when it comes of how I treat people, and I've always done my best to treat the employees with the utmost respect. I may not agree on every issue, especially when it comes to our finances, but they all know where I'm coming from, that I've always been honest when it comes to that. And my relationship with Mark has always been an honest one, and I always respected how he treated this council, even though at times we were adversary on certain issues, but he always put the city first. And that's why I admire him so much, because it takes a lot to address a lot of the issues that we face here in the city. And, you know, we're going into his office and, hey, you know what, we need you to do this, we're pressured in time, and, you know, he's just like, whatever I can do to get it done, I'm going to get it done. And that meant a lot, Mark, you know. So you really did a fantastic job, not just for this council but for this entire city, and you're definitely going to be missed. So on behalf of our mayor and an entire city council, and I won't do all the whereas's, whereas in your retirement, Mark, we will, please continue to do what you do and enjoy your live playing racquetball, going on trips and cruises, geez, wow, watching USC football games, listening to music, and attending concerts. And now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of the city of Santa Ana, do hereby declare August 1st, 2017 as Mark Lawrence Day. I know, he has a boot, you know he's on retirement, he has boots on.
Every August 1st, every August 1st you gotta come back and volunteer. Every August 1st, we'll see you back here. I see my friends from CalOptima, if you can all come up, I know I see a variety of you, so please come forward. We all know that many things are important in our lives, but obviously, our health comes first, we gotta take care of ourselves, and we gotta take care of our children and loved ones, and we are blessed in California to have a very good healthcare system, you know, at the federal level, that discussion is struggling a little bit, but here in California, we're keeping it strong. And in California, for folks that are low-income, we have something called Medi-Cal. But here in Orange County, we really have branded that under the umbrella of CalOptima. And so, CalOptima is, you know, a healthcare plan and has a variety of services that's to great benefit of our community. And so, I know when I recently saw Magnolia Moreno doing outreach in the community, and I see him everywhere, I thought, wow, there's something different with CalOptima, especially here in Santa Ana and the Latino community, and she told me about it, so I thought, you know, I'm gonna bring you all back and recognize you. So let me inform the audience and our watchers at home about this. So CalOptima, like I said, is California's Medi-Cal system. It's a community-based health plan serving low-income residents here in Orange County. We serve here in Orange County through CalOptima 800,000 residents, including 141,488 who reside in the city of Santa Ana, which is approximately 43% of the city's population. So 43% of the city's population is in the CalOptima system. So it's significant, and so a lot of our families, you know, get their healthcare through CalOptima, so it's very important, and the relationship is very important. Countywide, the Latino population comprises approximately 30% of CalOptima's total membership, and as part of their overall mission, they aim to provide members with access to quality healthcare services, which include materials translated into seven different languages, and interpreter services for both customer service as well as accompaniment to appointments. In 2016, which is really why we're here, because I noticed it, CalOptima's Community Relations Department launched an innovative, launched an initiative to identify, establish, and strengthen relationships between CalOptima and organizations serving the Latino community, including through the following efforts. Number one, enhanced communication efforts in the Latino community through projects aimed at capturing human interest stories, creation of an infographic on how individuals can access healthcare benefits, CalOptima presentations in Latino community. Number two, monthly cafecito meetings attended by community-based organizations that provide programs and services in the community. And third, increased participation in community events serving the Latino community, thereby building capacity in the community. And again, they've been very much noticed. We have two individuals here from CalOptima today, they're Public Affairs Manager and Community Relations, Tiffany Caí Camuno, as well as Magnolia Moreno, she goes by Maggie as well, and she also used to serve us in the state senate as well. You know, you'll see, including the agenda today and a discussion later in the meeting, there's a lot of dialogue about the leadership of CalOptima, especially at the board level and its interactions with the board of supervisors, and we're gonna be discussing that, you know, thanks to Councilmember Sarmiento wanting to discuss this with us today. But what happens at the board level, you know, really is different, that's what's happening at the staff level, when the staff is doing a great job, again, already through their efforts, they're benefiting 43% of our community in Santa Ana, so it's an amazing amount. And so, on behalf of the mayor and city council, we thank them and give them a big round of applause. And a few words, please.
On behalf of CalOptima, I want to express my gratitude for this recognition. At this time, I'd also like to recognize Maggie Moreno, she's our Spanish bilingual community relations specialist, and I really admire her passion, her hard work and commitment to the Latino community. So again, thank you, and we look forward to continued collaboration to serve our members in the city of Santa Ana. So thank you very much.
Before I give them this, I also hope that the number will increase, because I know even with the many that do have CalOptima in our community, there's still many that don't have healthcare, so your plan will work for many of those in our community. So I ask you both to keep your commitment to doing outreach in Santa Ana to keep our community healthy. Again, on behalf of the Marin City Council, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I think many folks here know, because most of you are very community-oriented, Santa Ana has a long tradition through this program called Celebrate Santa Ana, where we bring out a lot of programs that we're doing in our community, we recognize a lot of leaders. And in June, we held that event at the Heritage Museum of Orange County, and I was very impressed with the quality of the leaders that we had there with us being recognized at that event. I was joined by Mayor Protem Martinez and Councilmember Benavides, and I thought, you know, for those that could come, we'd love to recognize them here at a council meeting as well. This year, there were 12 Community Building Awards that were presented, and we have certificates for all of them. Not sure if they're, all are here, but I would like to have them come up. Carlos Aguilar, artist for Among Heroes mural, so come on up. Peter Chang, Child Creativity Lab. Corporal Gonzalo Garcia with the Santa Ana Police Department. Captain Stephen Horner, Orange County Fire Authority. Dr. Susie Lopez-Guerra with the Santa Ana Unified School District. Mario Morales with the Southeast Victory Outreach Pace and Unity Group. Patty Perrales Huerta Mesa with Padres Unidos. And a fan club, wow, very good. From Immaculate Heart of Mary, Father Edward Podgan, the Santa Ana Healthy Neighborhoods Alliance leaders, and I do see a word from them as well. From El Centro Cultural de México, especially Radio Santana, Luis Sarmiento, from our very loved Taller San José and Hope Builders, Shauna Smith, I know I saw her here early, maybe she's still here or not, okay, you're behind me, okay, you always plan ahead. And then Rose Wolfram with the Illumination Foundation Children's Resource Center. Let's give them all a big round of applause. And I am gonna pick a couple to speak, if you don't mind, we obviously have many here, but I'd like to have Patty Perrales Huerta Mesa maybe say a couple words? Right? And then we'll have Shauna Smith also.
On behalf of Padres Unidos, I'd like to thank the very honorable Mayor Pulido and the council members for this great honor. Also, I'd like to say thank you to my mom, who happens to be the executive director for Padres Unidos, who's also here, and she's my hero, my inspiration, my role model. She's actually dedicated most of her life to walking alongside families in Santa Ana. So more importantly, I'd like to ask all the families that are here, that are from Padres Unidos, the kids, the moms, the sisters, the parents, the teachers, all of you guys, please stand up, because this is for you guys. Thank you. And we hope to be able to continue walking alongside, you know, successful families, build successful communities, and we love, we love our community and we love walking alongside each one of you. Thank you.
So thank you so much, Councilmember Solorio, for this honor, and it's really been my privilege and the privilege of Taller San José Hope Builders for the last 22 years to work with the young adults in our community, to help them plug into their, into workforce opportunities and to advance themselves, their young lives and their family, and we're proud to do that in the city of Santa Ana. And so, really on behalf of all the staff and the students at Taller San José Hope Builders, we thank you for this.
And again, Mayor Protem Martinez was at that event as well, and with all the folks being recognized, if you could say a few words as well.
Thank you, Jose, for really bringing them here to really recognize them in front of not only the audience here, but all those who were not able to celebrate and come to celebrate Santa Ana, for your recognition and really the great work that you all have done in our community. And I said it in my small speech, that again, what makes Santa Ana very special is the folks like yourselves and the organizations and the work that you all do. You make this city look great, and you make this mayor and council look great for the amazing work that you do every single day in this community. So thank you all very much.
Child Creativity Lab. And Carlos was with artist for Among Heroes mural, thank you. Gonzalo Garcia Corporal with San FPD. Captain Stephen Horner with the Orange County Fire Authority. I don't see Dr. Lopez-Guerra, but we'll mail it to her. Mario Morales, Southeast Victory Outreach, don't see him here. Patty Perrales Huerta Mesa. Congratulations. I don't think I see Father Edward, we'll get it to him as well. Santa Ana Healthy Neighborhood Alliance. Both of you come up, all of you. We're also part of the Wilshire Square event over the weekend, which was fantastic. And then with Taller San José Hope Builders, and an incredible internship and job program that you have right now as we speak. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
And from the Illumination Foundation, Children's Resource Center. And from the Illumination Foundation, Children's Resource Center, Rose Wolfram, congratulations. Congratulations.
Now, we're going to hear from Councilmember Villegas and Maria Fierro, are you here, or Cadra Thily? Please come on down.
I would also like to call up front, Felipe Villardin García from Supervisor Andrew Doe's office, Avellino Valencia from State Assembly Tom Daley's office, Tracy Theodore from the Orange County Family Justice Center in Anaheim. If you could please join us up here, we appreciate it. Thank you. So thank you very much, everyone. Chief, I am pleased to make this presentation this evening. On a matter that is great, of great public importance to me and of great concern, the issue of domestic violence that affects many people here in our communities. Too many people, too many children and many families experience violence in their home. And it is also one of the most dangerous calls that our police officers respond to. A lot of people get injured, a lot of people, you know, there's a lot of death involved sometimes. It's unfortunate for me to report. And so there's a lot of cities that are already addressing this issue. And the city of Santa Ana, for being such a large city here in Orange County, we need to address this also. In 2016, we had 6,052 calls for service regarding domestic violence, which generated 2,936 reports. Here in 2017, and we're not, we're about halfway or a little bit over halfway, we're at 2,962 calls for service on domestic violence, and we've had 1,446 as of today. Those are the numbers for reports generated. Reason I bring this up, we need to do more, we need to bring a lot more services to Orange County. These two individuals right here, these great people that I have been working with throughout the years, want to recognize them for their hard work in bringing education and services to our communities. And let me just say a little bit about each of them. Maria Fierro here, 24 years with the Orange County Social Services Agency, 11 years with La Mujer de Hoy, Domestic Abuse Empowerment, Carithily, many years with the various nonprofits. Both work for Four Girls nonprofit also, dealing with middle-aged teens and violence prevention, parenting programs and survivor programs. But one thing they have in common also is they both were working at the Orange County Family Justice Center, which is a very special place. And so today, for all your hard work and for everything you've been doing, I want to, the city and I, we want to recognize you for your hard work, and we have these proclamations for you from the city of Santa Ana. We want to recognize everything that you've done for us, Maria Fierro and Carithily. If you want to say a few words.
Well, I've been working with domestic violence victims for over 25 years. My goal was to save one life. And as you know, it's been many, I last count. But I also want to thank Councilman Juan Villegas, who has supported me on all the different programs. La Mujer de Hoy for 11 years, empowering women of domestic violence. So I want to thank you, Juan, for that. He also has donated his book called La Vida Tiene Valores, which is, you know, life has values that we have used for our different programs. And I will continue the effort to end domestic violence. And I would like to invite all of those professionals, you know, responsible citizens, to join us in the effort of ending domestic violence. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I do want to recognize City Councilmember Juan Villegas for this effort and for everybody in the city to really come forward and break the cycle of violence. It sounds so easy and yet it is so difficult. What we saw so much in family violence is that it is family. It's the violence that gets passed down from generation to generation. And so here, what we want to do in Santa Ana is what we've done in Anaheim and in other parts of Orange County, and it's break that cycle. So thank you so much for your leadership and thanks to the entire City Council for their leadership and recognition as well. Thank you.
So with that being said, there is something that I have been working, Maria and Carithily, we've been working quietly on for some time, God, it's been about a year now trying to put everything together. And so I will say, I've begun working with local, regional, state, federal officials to identify ways to address the epidemic of violence in the home. And what we would like to bring to the future here in Santa Ana, and I'm announcing this evening, we want to bring a family justice center just like the one modeled in the great city of Anaheim. It is a, it is a location where people, where victims can go and feel safe with, and have confidential work done, they can have the resources brought to them. In other words, it's a one-stop service center where they can have all this brought to them because those victims are in a very difficult situation, and it's very, very hard for them to go out and travel and just even try to get, come up with a plan to leave those kinds of relationships so they can have a safer home. If you would like to come forward, Trace, and tell us a brief on the Family Justice Center in Anaheim.
Absolutely. Sure. So the Orange County Family Justice Center located in Anaheim is a collaboration of 17 government agencies and nonprofits that provide many of the resources that victims of family violence need. So prior to this type of collaboration, and like in this scene in many cities, victims of family violence have to go to various different locations to get all of the various services that they might need. For example, they might need a temporary restraining order, so they would have to go to the courthouse, or they may need to go to a shelter to find a place to live, or they may need to go to CalWorks to get their services. At the Family Justice Center, all of the resources are under one roof, so they can come to the center, be met by a victim advocate who will do a needs and a danger assessment and bring the various resources to those survivors in one place. So it's much easier for them to get the services that they need to get out of the dangerous situation. So certainly, every community would benefit from a family justice center, and no two better ladies to lead the effort than these two. So thank you very much for your efforts.
Thank you, Ms. Theodore, we appreciate it. You know, the city of Anaheim has offered to help us. And the reason that I ask all these departments and officers to, other agencies to come forward because they are here to support us, to make this happen. So we have support at the congressional level, at the state level, from the county, the police department is going to be heading this, and we look forward to bringing this to Santa Ana in the future. Family Justice Center, thank you very much, and thank you.
Good job, Councilmember Villegas, a very worthy cause, and thank you for all the representatives that were here today in this effort to, you know, support and establish the domestic violence services here in Orange County. So with that, all right, so with that, let's, first, let me ask the city attorney if there's anything to report out of closed session, please.
Mayor, we have three items to report this evening. I want to just report that the city council voted 4-0 with councilmembers Sarmiento, Solario, and Villegas, and Mayor Protem Martinez voting yes to approve two workers' comp cases. One entitled García on the agenda for the maximum amount of $9,800, and the second one Russo in the amount of $26,000. And those same four councilmembers, joined by Mayor Polito, also approved a settlement in the matter of Maria Quintanilla, to approve a settlement in the amount of $450,000 by a 5 to 0 vote. That's all I have to report.
Thank you. So with that, let me come and we'll begin with consent counter items. I know I have several speakers. Why don't I take the speakers and then I'll bring it back to council, we'll go from there. 11A and 25B, Ilya. Ilya Dengon, are you here? Ilya, if you're not here, I'm gonna move on and go on to Richard Garcia, please, on 11B, I believe. Richard, are you here? Come on down. And then after Richard Carmen, just says Carmen, also on 11B. And then after, I'll be David Garvahal. Please, go ahead, Richard.
Good evening, councilmembers and people from the council. I'm here in recognition of the food vending ordinance. Back in February 17th, I wrote a letter to city council regarding the issues, negative issues that's been going on. We need to see where we can put an ordinance, and we got to work together with the other agencies. We have to work with Santa Police Department, and we have to work also with the county. And all in sequence, especially on the weekends. If we could put something on the weekends regarding a weekend food vending surveillance ordinance, we don't have one. We call PD, PD says it's the city's issue, city's issue says it's county, and we go on a triangle. We need to close that gap. We need to work together as an issue. I'm not trying to get rid of the food vending vehicles, but we need, definitely need to put up ordinance. The fact is that some of these vending vehicles are putting restaurants out of business because they're open until 1, 2:00 in the morning. I've seen kids running across the street, I've seen any photos regarding issues, on issues about those requests. So we definitely need to pass this ordinance. Like I said, I'm here on behalf of the community for the businesses and food services. So thank you very much.
And after that, David Garvahal.
I am here as a business owner of Santa Ana, and I'm also representing our building. And I, Richard is also helping me to figure out how to handle the situation with the food trucks because it's becoming, it's becoming a big issue because we only have, so the address is 1418 North Main Street, and I have about four food trucks and about three food trucks. And so they literally are blocking all, half of the sidewalk on either side. And so the Bank of America is right below us, and they use all our parking spaces, and they basically throw all their trash in the parking structure, within the structure. So I spoken to the police department and had to get a hold of the situation because it becomes a liability. They throw their bottles, and then they set up tables and chairs, and it becomes like a restaurant outside. So I've been dealing with this for three years, and actually it's five years, but three years I've been really trying to figure out what can the city do to help us as business owners to, you know, get a hold of the situation. And I approached, I approached the food trucks, and I tell them, you cannot use a parking structure, you need to, you cannot have tables outside, and you cannot throw your trash in the facility. But everybody always says, you talk to the city, you talk to the city, and I don't know what to do about it.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor? Yes. If I could just, go ahead, make a brief comment to the city attorney. I know that at the last meeting, we directed that you continue speaking and try to negotiate some terms with the vendors, and there's different vendor groups out there, and there's counsel that represented the vendors back in 2006. So as you go through those discussions, Madam City Attorney, if you could also inject this issue that we've heard, and obviously, it's a difficult one to tackle because we're talking about right-of-way issues and where the vendors can park, but the proximity to brick-and-mortar businesses is real sensitive, just, you know, like the safety issue, just like the proximity to schools and others. But I think there should be some way that that issue is another term that needs to be negotiated with the vendors, just so we don't hurt one business to help another, right? We don't want to see our food vending trucks go away, we want to be able to work out a good, reasonable system, but we also want to protect our brick-and-mortar that have to deal with, you know, rent and other costs that don't fall to the mobile vending truck. So if there's some way that we can reconcile those interests, that would be great. Thank you. Thank you for that. Now, on item 23A, David Garvahal.
Hello. Good evening. I'm here as a resident of Santana tonight to express my opposition to Agenda Item 23A regarding the improvements to the South Main corridor. I was looking through the staff report, and it doesn't look like there's been an in-depth analysis of the negative impacts this development is going to have on the community of South Main. I think a lot of us can refer back to the Renaissance Plan and think of the very adamant opposition of residents. I'm not speaking on behalf of anyone tonight, but I've seen firsthand the violence of displacement and the high cost in rents and the criminalization we face because of development that doesn't meet our needs. The residents of Santana organized and fought for a sanctuary city, but we do not, and we cannot live in a sanctuary city when we are being evicted and displaced from our communities. The battle against gentrification is being fought urgently across the nation, and I urge each and every one of you to think of the children and families this project will harm before moving forward with a decision.
Thank you. Gil Salmon, followed by Gavia Hernandez.
All right, so just to be clear, I'm here as a resident of Santa Ana, actually in Henniger Park, which is the neighborhood of budding South Main. So, you know, I just, I'm hesitating here because I'm trying to react to the last speaker. One of the things for me around this plan is that a huge part of it is around traffic calming. And whether you're talking about three girls dying on a Halloween night, or a 71-year-old crossing the street from church, we have to do something about that here. So to the effect that this plan reduces traffic speeds on that street, introduces bulb bouts, creates more safe crossing zones for pedestrians and bicyclists, I'm fully in favor of that. And I wanted to mention that on the vision plan for that, which isn't included in the staff report, you know, there are bicyclists who are just kind of sprinkled in with zero bicycle infrastructure. So this is one corridor that was found to, or sort of marked for a bicycle corridor in the Safe Santa Ana Mobility Plan that you all passed. And so from First down to Warner on Main, it's supposed to be a bicycle corridor. And so we should be including signs or something in order to make sure that that's safe for bicyclists. And then just lastly, I want to make sure that the Environment and Transportation Commission isn't included anywhere in this as potential outreach, I want to make sure that that happens. And then also, we have no parks in Henniger Park. And I have two children, and there are a ton of kids in the neighborhood, and I'd like for my kids to be able to play with other kids in the neighborhood. And so to the effect that we can include the street closure with the creation closure with the creation of open space and parks for the neighborhood on Main and Warner and Main and, or sorry, Main and Walnut and Main and Pine, I would really appreciate you ensuring that that continues to be a part of this project, so that it addresses some of the things that was talked about. You know, one of the issues that we have is just, you know, neighborhood cohesion, like as new residents come into the neighborhood, it's really important that we invest and make sure people aren't displaced, but also making sure that people can interact with one another, and public spaces allow for that, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Gabby. And after Gabby, Alan Wu.
Tall people, okay. Hi, good evening. I'm here to talk about twenty-three A, and to talk about our concerns, chicanos sonidos, with the approval of the engineering process. We've looked at the envisioning map that Santa Ana has, and I think if it was up to the city, they would have already implemented a lot of those projects that are on this massive map where Fourth Street, where all of Santa Ana would look like Fourth Street. I hear some people talking about reduction in traffic, some safety concerns, and then this woman that talked about her business, and if you look at this map, a lot of the businesses on this main corridor, Main Street corridor, would be at risk of displacement. Now, if you have not seen the visioning map, there's buildings going all the way from McFadden all the way down to Warner. The plan is to make four-story and six-story buildings. Now, that's, right now, there's single-story buildings, mom-and-pop shops, and if we start approving these engineering processes, we are really approving now this mass development that will put a lot of these businesses out of business. So when you, Sarmiento, when you talk about protecting businesses, ensure how this will affect future businesses. This is your area and also Martinez's area on the Main Street corridor. We already interviewed some families that live on Warner and Main, and they are being evicted. One of the families has two children with developmental disabilities, and if they are evicted, they will have to leave Santa Ana because they cannot afford to live here anymore. We've talked to other businesses, business owners, who are worried about what will happen if this development occurs, and we're wondering if there's any plans to protect these existing businesses. Santa Ana cannot promote itself to be in support of local businesses, existing businesses, if there's no protections for them, if the goal is to develop these massive buildings and recruit all these new businesses. I also wanted to say that on August ninth, Mayor Polito, you'll be getting an award of recognizing during your city address, the hundred new businesses that you brought in. I hope that you will also address all the businesses that have been pushed out because of all the gentrification that has already happened in Santa Ana.
Thank you. Alan?
Hi, Mayor Polito and members of council. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Artis Bilard Neighborhood Association. We want to thank councilman Legas for supporting our donation for one thousand dollars. Thirty-five years ago, the Artis Bilard came together because we had gang problems, we were ravished by redevelopment, as it was coming down from the civic center, so we formed a neighborhood association. The result of that over the years has been that we've been able to contain the gang problem in the community by working with our city official, we've been able to get streets done, alleys and all that, and the neighborhood association is a lot stronger now, and we have allies with other neighborhood associations, and we work together, we connect the council. The donation last year did not go through because it fell through the crack somewhere with the former official, but we thank you for resurrecting it because we really need that resources for several events that we are gonna have. We have a street fair coming up with the black community near Prentice Hall, and it's a community that have been neglected for a long time, and many of the neighborhood leaders that I met again were ones that I trained thirty-five years ago through Sano, and it's important to see that they have a voice again. Then we have the Pasada, which is a very important event for our children in the community. We not only walk the neighborhood, but we renew our ties together, and we also hand out toys, which some of the resources from the donation will help. In addition, now, we're working with groups like Alice Rojas, Ryan Smoller, Chris Schmidt, to repaint and revitalize those murals that really put our neighborhood on the map, and it came out of an incident where there were gang problems and a community shooting, so that's one of the first mural in Santa Ana, and we're gonna repaint that, revitalize it, and we're gonna have a celebration again. So all this, the donation will go back to helping the residents engage other residents to work together to solve problems in our community, and it's all been because we have a good working relationship with members of the city council, and we thank you very much for that, and we thank you for your support.
And thank you for your good work over the decades, Alan. You've been doing this well for a long time. Thank you. So with that, I'm gonna bring it back to city council to consider the consent calendar. Mayor Protem Martinez?
I have eleven A, eleven B, nineteen D, nineteen E, nineteen F, twenty-three A.
I'd entertain, is there anybody else? I'd entertain a motion on the balance.
So move.
Is there, those in favor, please say aye. Aye, those opposed, motion carries, let's go, I think it was eleven A.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, eleven A is an ordinance second reading repealing the reenacting of the municipal code related to water and sewer. I just had a question just quickly for staff, because I did get some phone calls from some residents as it pertains to eleven A. If I can just please get an explanation, that we could put this on the record, eleven A, what is the difference between eleven A and seventy-five, and seventy-five A, which is essentially seventy-five that we will be moving for as a public hearing resolution establishing and amending the Santa Ana Municipal Code, Chapter thirty-nine, water and sewer fees for fiscal year twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen. It's my understanding, and maybe I gave them the wrong information, but we are doing a fee study, and we wanted to look at, before we even move forward, I just wanted to make sure that what we're doing, because it said it in the report, that we are gonna still be doing a fee study, but are these water and sewer? No. Fees included in the fee study, is the question that I have.
They will be included in the fee study, but this is changing them from being part of the code as to adopting them by a resolution.
So by a simple resolution by the city council, how many votes would that need? Is it a simple, is it a simple four votes?
I would think it'd be four votes.
Charter of course, four votes, okay, great. Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna be a no on this item, so you can please.
All right. Let me ask, is there a motion on eleven A?
So move.
I'll go ahead and second. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye, those opposed, motion carries. One no vote, please note that, Madam Clerk. Mayor Protem, I'm gonna turn item eleven B over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is also a second, a reading, and repealing the existing provisions that are involving noncompliance with the state code of regarding the mobile food vending vehicles, and so, since I am chairing this meeting, waiting for the mayor to exit real quickly here before we begin any discussion, we had a first reading, this is the second reading, is there any comment at this time from my colleagues on this specific item? I do have comment, and so if there is no comment from my colleagues, I will call for the question, and, so, okay, great, thank you. So I, as a chair, I try my best not to speak first and allow, you know, the rest of the council to speak, but here on this specific item, I just want to thank some of the folks that have come here to address this issue in regards to their business, and also into the neighborhood association as it pertains to, you know, safety, parking issues, and obstructing the public right-of-way. I know that this is just one part of the issue that we're dealing with here in this ordinance, but I just want to just speak that it is a valid one, what we're doing here in the second reading and wanting to make sure that we are in compliance with the state, but more importantly, I think, you know, this city council has asked our staff for sixty more days to do more outreach and outreach, and I'm not sure specifically who the outreach was to, was it to the business owners, or was it specifically to residents or certain business owners that too, you know, may have some issues that they want to address, so I would just ask the staff, who are you actually outreach to?
There were three things that we were asked to look at, and all of them really would be conversations with the vendors themselves. So tonight, we have heard from the businesses, we will be back in another thirty days, and so we will also add that into our outreach in talking about what problems they have and how we can address them in the new ordinance, this is repealing the old ordinance.
Correct.
This evening, the new ordinance that we bring back for the council's deliberation and consideration.
Thank you for clarifying that, Ms. City Manager, because I know specifically the council asks to have conversations directly with the vendors and not with others that may have had issues specifically, issues addressing, as it pertains to the food produce or food trucks, that certain residents and certain businesses within those neighborhoods also are facing issues and would like to be heard as well. And so I think we need a balanced approach, I think you all know my position here, but this city council did support a sixty-day continuance, and so what we're doing here today is just, again, repealing the old one and moving forward to, with state codes regarding the mobile vending vehicles of Article of Chapter thirty-six of the Santa Ana Municipal Code. So I'll go ahead and call for the question. Do we have motion? We were first by Mr. Solario, second by Sarmiento, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Mr. Mayor, you may come in. So as he is coming in, the next item is nineteen D, and just very quickly, because I've been receiving a lot of emails from certain folks as it pertains to capital improvement projects, and Fred, just if we just could state for the record, that we can find, and maybe, maybe it's not, but I'm assuming that this, that the CIP report is online? Is that, if it's not online, how can we get that on there? Because I think a lot of constituents and residents are asking when specific projects are going to be completed, some of them have been in the queue, and they haven't seen any progress, others have said that city staff has decided not to fund those, those projects are not being funded, they're not moving, being, moving forward, and so for clarification, because I know what we're doing here is just a receiving file from the Public Works Agency on our monthly CIP, I know we get these reports, but, you know, how does the public get informed about all capital improvement projects that are occurring throughout the city?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Yes, the report is online, supposed to be, it's updated every month, and it will show updated information on all CIP projects that we have in-house. Obviously, things change just due to funding and grant funding delays, due to changes that happens out of our control, that's why we try to reflect that every month.
So I would just request, because I think maybe not everyone is able to go online or find it, because, you know, our website, you know, sometimes I have difficulty looking for certain documents, and they may not be able to get that, to that specific document, but how can we do a better job, Ms. City Manager, of how we communicate with the public as it pertains to these infrastructure projects? Because I think whether it's our parks, or whether it's a street improvement, or other road improvements like bridges that have been in the queue for quite some time, folks will circle back with the council and ask us, well, where are you at? Or they table this off. How can we do a better job in possibly providing to the general public beyond them going to the website about some of these projects that are in the pipeline, going to get completed or not going to get completed because of funding?
I won't have a comprehensive answer this evening. I think it is important to let people know when new projects are starting, maybe when really large projects that we've been talking about in this room or in community meetings get delayed. We've talked a little bit about a newsletter, an online newsletter, and how we might communicate better with our constituents, might be that that would be a regular column and a monthly letter, so not saying any of those things are the actual answer, but all ideas that we have thought about and will put more thought into.
Yeah, and I just state that because, you know, there are specific residents that are very active and that are communicating with council members, and we're going back and forth with all the forty-nine staff members and council members in the emails, and maybe other folks in the public also want this information, so just wanted us to bring that. And then lastly, on SB one, I just want to thank you and your staff for putting that together as it pertains to the projects that are gonna be, coming before us for the funding, which is very important, and then maybe how do we put that out in a newsletter that, you know, with the SB one funding, these are the projects that the city is proposing to the state to get funded as well. I think just, not just the council getting that memo, I think the public wants to as well know what those projects are.
Sure.
And with that, Mr. Mayor, I move the item forward.
I'll second the item. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. And Fred, if you can give me some of that information that Mayor Protem just requested before the State of the City, it might be appropriate to mention some of that. Thank you. So with that, what's next?
Next, Mr. Mayor, is nineteen E, which is also a receiving file for strategic plan, and this is just for the city manager's office, had a very quick question. As we updated our budget, and I thank you for always putting this report, I didn't see the attachment on the, on our system here, as I tried to click, so I just want to make nineteen E, there was no attachment, and this, but just based on this report, based on the approval of this fiscal budget, is there going to be any changes to the strategic planning in the five-year phase? Are we still gonna continue to fund what we committed to, or are there any changes to that five-year strategic plan as it pertains to the funding that was available?
Council? We're not talking about any changes now, we're talking about proceeding as the council's already adopted it.
Fantastic, thank you.
Mayor Protem, I'd just like to report that the strategic plan is available through the website, so the report is a link that's provided, and the link will be added to the agenda packet after, at the end of the meeting.
Fantastic, thank you very much.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion to move forward, thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries, next item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I asked to bring this forward, and I'm not sure if my colleagues were able to have the opportunity to read this, but to receive and file in regards to the Arts and Culture Commission annual report, and thank you, Jorge, for doing a great job in articulating all the work that this Arts and Culture Commission has done. I ask for this report to come before us because we established this commission about three years ago, and yet, nothing has come to us, what have they done? I know that we've been approving many grants, they have now a new chair and a vice chair, and they've made changes, and, you know, they've participated in various other activities and working with the community and moving with Arts and Culture, but when we first established that, and one of the reasons why I supported it was that we wanted to have a conversation, one, about the place-making, and I saw that it was on there, and hopefully we continue to move forward with that, but more importantly was the sister cities, that was one of the reasons, and one of the biggest conversations that we had on this dais, that beyond just some of the duties of the basic recommendations of those many grants, these, the pilot project of the different outlets of Edison, the, what do they call, the utility boxes, and that we wanted to talk about sister cities, and I don't know where we're at, three years later, I know there was conversations, I had a meeting with the new chair, Pochapena now, and we talked, and I asked her, said, you know, hey, where are you, where are we at with this sister cities program? That's one of the things that we discussed, we're one of the only few cities in Orange County, and even in California, that doesn't even have a sister city, especially being a city of our size, and so we had had that conversation with the prior city manager and its staff, and so I would just like to know, where are we with that? It wasn't mentioned in the report, or maybe I bypassed it, I was more looking at the activities that occurred, maybe it was in there, and I overlooked it, but I know there were some initial conversations, but then it just ended, and so what, because it never came back to the city council, what we were gonna do next?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Protem, Mayor, members of the city council. As far as the sister cities program goes, the commission has had several conversations over the last three years on the program, whether it would be through the formal sister cities international group, which the city did pay dues for two years ago. Following that action, staff looked at reevaluating the sister cities program because there was no criteria set yet, was it just a cultural exchange, were we looking at economic development? So in December, a subcommittee was formed in order to further look at the sister cities program. Subsequent to that, there has not been much movement. I have met with many of the commissioners in my one-on-one meetings with them to discuss the program and steps moving forward. That is one of the items for movement this year as a discussion item. We can definitely bring an update back to the mayor and city council once we've had some dialogue with the commissioners, but the commission has had various ideas on whether we want a formal program, an informal program, and what that looks like. So we can definitely come back and provide the commission, the city council some information on that. city council some information on that. The reason it wasn't included is it's not an exhaustive list of all of the activities, and because there wasn't a lot of movement last year, we didn't want to highlight that as an achievement or an accomplishment of the commission.
It's just something on the future for, you know, because this city council specifically, that was one of the action items for this commission. As you all know, the commission is an advisory to this council, and specifically, we did make and pinpoint that we wanted to address the sister cities, the place making. We embarked in an arts culture, an arts master plan that I know they got fulfilled, that was brought back here. The last thing that we want is now three years in the making, you know, is this commission working? Is it not working? You know, we, maybe we can hear back and get feedback to making sure that we're investing our dollars appropriately, not just this council, just supporting many grants, but then just letting, but we also want to hear from the chairs of each of the commissions, specifically like the Arts and Culture Commission, to get their feedback, and how can we be helpful and communicate with one another of how we can move the city forward? Because I know our commissioners have a lot of great ideas that sometimes are not being shared to this council, and that I think that, you know, we need to continue to hear from them, and have them hear from us as well. I know there's more comment.
Thank you. Yeah, there's more comment. Let's try, let me comment to our allotted time.
Oh, you should have told me.
Councilwoman Sarmiento.
I'm very passionate about this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And yes, speaking about passion, I know that, I want to thank staff, because you have a lot of passionate Arts and Culture Committee members, right? So they're very busy, they're very active. We see them all over, and sometimes I think we see them that, you know, they tax our time, or they're exhausting. But, you know, when you look at other cities, they're completely dormant, right? We have a very active arts community. And so that's a really good thing, when you think about it. And I know that they sometimes call, you know, Mayor Protem, they call me, they call others on the council, because they're so excited about a grant that's out there, an opportunity that they're looking at, other communities that are doing exciting things. And, you know, when we chose to extend the committee status to this topic, it was because we placed a high value on arts and culture in our community. So that was a good thing. And I think that, you know, any community, as diverse as ours, as, you know, that places such a high value on culture, has to have something like this. So to the extent we can deal with, you know, some of their requests a little bit better, it is always helpful, because these are folks that are taking time out of their busy schedules to devote their skill set to things that are important. On sister cities, I know that when I sat down and spoke with a few of the members, and with the Mexican consulate's office, there was talk about Huanahto, which is a beautiful city, and I think a lot of folks felt strongly about that. One of the things I had asked some of the members and the Mexican consulate to consider is what are the demographics of the city? In other words, what states from Mexico and other countries are the largest in population here in town? And I know that, you know, Michoacan is a very large state that's represented in the city, Guerrero, and I think the state of Mexico. So to the extent that those things are part of the decision-making, if we do go forward with sister city, you know, codifying those relationships, or establishing those relationships, it's really important to find out where are folks from, right? Because there's a natural nexus there that we can use for there to be an exchange of culture, ideas, business. So that's why, and I know back then, some of the states that I mentioned were going through some difficult moments, you know, with crime and violence. And so I think that's what dissuaded a lot of the relationships. But, you know, maybe now is a good time to revisit it that we're talking about.
Thank you for standing at the time limit, that counts, Solario?
Yes.
That was just coincidence.
No, it was very good, man.
I think, I think the idea that the council had for creating this commission was great, and I'm glad you all did it. And I like the idea of reports, but like Mayor Protem Martinez mentioned, it'd be nice to every now and then have the, you know, the physical chairperson come and say some words. And we really don't have that many commissions that maybe, I don't know how we discuss it, or maybe staff could think through it, but it might be nice to, like, once a month, have, you know, one commission give a report. I think that would give a real good flavor for what they're all doing. Because quite frankly, although we get a lot of paper and emails, we don't really know what they're struggling with, or what their big victories have been, or how we may be able to support them further. So I do like the idea of maybe starting with the arts commission. So, thank you.
Thank you for those comments. I believe we have a
A motion.
A motion.
Forward, Mayor.
Second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Twenty-three eight.
Yes, my final one, Mayor, and I'll be quick. Can you put the time on just very quickly? Because I know this is more Councilman Sarmiento's war, but I just wanted to pull this item, and I just want to thank my Commissioner Gilat for coming. And that's exactly why I wanted to talk specifically was on this issue, was on the traffic calming issues, which are very important. You look at South Maine, and I know we've had many discussions, myself and Councilman Sarmiento, with the, with a lot of the residents, whether they're from Wall Street Square, or they're from the east side, and also the association. For, you know, I think our 11 years, we've discussed this specific plan, and didn't have the funding, and all kinds of issues arose. And I think Councilman Sarmiento will speak on that. I won't go all into that. But I just want to make sure that we're able to connect the dots. We have plans here, we're moving with this plan here. We have the Vision Zero, where specifically, we know that's a high incident corridor. We have a lot of activity there. As we look at that planning, and I just sent a grant to staff in regards to the Sustainable Community Affordable Housing Grant. If you look at that area, the bus system, the rapid bus system, specifically for OCTA, is a high corridor right there for Main Street. You can connect that for sustainable community and transit. It doesn't have to be near a train station. And so looking at that rapid bus network on Main, we would be able to apply. And I really believe that it's important for us, and I want to thank some of the members of the audience that did come, is that we don't want to displace most folks. And one of the reasons why I didn't support Warner is for that reason, is that we already have a housing crisis. We have a huge amount of homelessness issues here. And, you know, the more and more we continue to expand our roads, or bring in different developments, we have to keep in mind that the people that already live here, the businesses that are already here, how can we accommodate them, bring them into the fold? And I know that's something that South Maine and many of the associations have been doing as well. And so I just wanted to let the public know that. But again, I want to make sure too, that there's conversations, that E-TAC is able to participate. They are part of the transportation. You know, that's part of the, of E-TAC and what they do. And I really believe that we need to include our commissioners as much as we possibly can. And I know that sometimes it takes a lot of work from our staff, but there's a lot of things that this council doesn't see, and it comes at the 11th hour for us to approve. It's always great to have these folks that are really volunteering their time to go to these meetings, and learn about the community, and sharing information. And so if we can include them, it'd be greatly appreciated. Also include members of our community that have interest in wanting to make sure that we have sustainable communities. And with that, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you for the comments. Councilwoman Sarmiento, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Mayor Protem said it all. You know, the only concern was, I know we had a speaker that came up and said, you know, is this an effort to try to, you know, gentrify or push folks out? Just the contrary, I think one of the reasons, and one of the underlying reasons for me, in addition to the good traffic calming efforts, efforts to make it a much safer corridor, because we do have a lot of families that live very close to that corridor, and young kids that cross Main to get to elementary school, or, you know, or to high school. So we also saw that there was displacement going on on Fourth Street, right? As the rents became higher, folks couldn't afford to be on Fourth Street. Their quinceañera shops had to close, you know, restaurants, other forms of businesses had to close. Well, we saw that the rents in South Maine were lower, right? So those were opportunities to try to retain those businesses, and give them an opportunity of where they could go in town, and still keep them here in Santa Ana. Because many of them, once they're displaced, they go elsewhere, they go outside the city. South Maine would have been a natural place, as we saw it as a magnet for them to go ahead and recreate a critical mass of businesses where they can still continue to operate, and not have too much of an impact on their clientele. So that was, you know, one of the reasons. Just to the contrary, we thought if we could create more foot traffic, you introduce some residential, you introduce some other amenities there, we create a community that's much, much more dense, there's more commerce going on. And I know the existing businesses there saw South Maine as just a pass-through corridor, where cars would just get from Irvine to the south, or Costa Mesa to the south, to Orange on the north, right? So they'd just be going back and forth. By traffic calming, we slow folks down, they get out of their cars, they shop in the businesses, they eat at the restaurants, and it helps commerce in our town. I know it doesn't help regional traffic, but it helps our residents, and that's what our priority should be. So that's why I think, you know, we looked at this, you know, carefully. You know, I'm not sure, Mr. Mayor, how the Transit Authority or OCTA looks at this, because they need as many corridors that get traffic moving, and we understand that. But we also realize that we have to protect our stakeholders who are in town, who are trying to make a living and do business as well. So.
Thank you. Point well taken. Any other comment on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve.
There's a second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, I believe now we have oath of offices.
Yes, if I can have Shirley Muneir and Vince Fraser come to the front, please. They will be sworn in as youth commissioner and community redevelopment commission member,
I, Shirley Muneir, do solemnly swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic. That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation, or purpose of evasion. That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties from which I am about to enter. Thank you.
Congratulations.
I, Vince Fraser, do solemnly swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic. And I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation, or purpose of evasion. And I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about
Congratulations to both of you. We look forward to your service, and I'm sure you're going to enjoy your respective commissions. So with that, I want to bring our attention to item 55A. Fifty-five B. All right, right now, we're on A. I would entertain a motion. This is resolution supporting the California Water Fix and California Eco Restore Projects.
I'll move the item, but I think we have a member of the audience who wishes to say a couple comment about the resolution, Water Fix, if you
Director Barbour.
Absolutely. Come on down.
He's a director from WD, and so am I. And, but of course, always good to hear from him.
I think he has three hats. Is it the Met, Modoc, and one other, I hear?
Met, Modoc, and the Yorba Land Water District. So I do quite a bit, so.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'll make this very quick, because if the votes are there, I'll just shut up and go to the back. But I just, I just want to say, on behalf of the municipal water district of Orange County, we really enjoy up at Met, working with Councilmember Martinez. Interim city manager is Cynthia Kurtz. We work very closely with the three cities, Fullerton and Anaheim. And the California fix is so critical for the long-term reliability for Southern California. I know Councilmember Solario, when he was in Sacramento, was a great leader on water issues, and he understands better than most the importance there. And also Councilman Sarmiento is on the Orange County Water District. We work very closely together to ensure water reliability for the residents of Santa Ana. So I would encourage strong support for this. And we will be voting at Met on this in September, so.
And thank you for your leadership on all these different dishes that affect so many millions of people. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett.
So with that, more comment, Councilwoman Sarmiento?
It's gonna be a second.
Yeah, I made a motion.
Got it. Any additional comment, Councilwoman Solario?
Yes.
Start the clock, Madam Clerk.
I do want to thank
The time, go.
I do want to thank staff for bringing this forward. I know Mayor Protem Martinez and Councilmember Sarmiento have been doing a lot in this project area. And, you know, the water fix is something, you know, we need. It's to have, you know, sustainable water, to keep coming from the Sacramento Delta area, through the Central Valley, down to Southern California. So we really need it, and more than anything else, this provides reliability in an environmental way. But also, we need to continue to work at the local level on more regional and interregional projects. I know both the members I mentioned are also very behind that idea in that, you know, we can't always rely on the Delta, or there may be an earthquake up there. I know Mayor Protem Martinez says it's not if, it's when, it's coming. And if that happens, you know, the Delta area will really get salinated, and the water will not be of drinkable quality for months, or potentially years. So for those reasons, and the issues with the Colorado River, we do need to have ongoing sustainable water sources here in Orange County, Southern California. And we need to work with the resources that we have. I know our water district's also looking at various options there too. So I'm very supportive and thank the staff for bringing this forward.
So we've already had motion, the second comment. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Now, item 55B. We have several speakers, so we'll hear from the speakers, and then we'll bring it to council. Alan, you're first. Alan Wu, followed by Madeline Spencer. Get ready, Madeline.
What I'd like to first thank Michelle and City Manager Kurtz for supporting our planning session with Jane Rojas on Latino urbanism. I bring that as an introduction, because we were able to begin to understand how culture and art really influences how people have impression of their community. I know, when I looked at some of the pictures that James put up there, I went kind of like, yuck. You know, I didn't like wrought iron fences, but I began to understand why they had that. I began to understand why people turned their backyard into the front yard. I also began to understand and remember studies I did on the underground economy, and also the studies I did at Community Action Partnership before I retire, on poverty in Santa Ana. And that there's always been a vibrant, and I say vibrant, underground economy of those below, the low-income community, and particularly among immigrant population, that they're not consuming social services, because they're not eligible. They make their own economy to support their family. And that's an important notion to understand how people survive in this city, are part of the economy, and part of the fabric. And they got to be a place for them, and I think that this resolution begins the process of understanding that. On the other side, there are people like me, that are trying to bring in $600 million for other kinds of development along the way. And now, I'm a little more sensitive in making sure that that does not displace people, but we can incorporate that. So I think that I'm learning, whereas when I first came to Santa Ana, I thought the city was an adversarial place, and people weren't very nice. And I'm glad to learn that when I went through the process of trying to get an organization off the ground, Jorge and people at the Sixth Floor and Eighth Floor were very helpful, friendly, and navigated, helping navigate us through all the different forms and stuff that I have to do. So my impression of the planning department and everything, it's kind of changed from the days where I had to come here and shout and yell. But I also realized that we've got much more to do, because there are poor people in the city, by the number of people on Medicare. So we need to begin something to bring jobs for people, to our youth, to our people out there that support family.
Thank you, Alan.
And if you need any help, we'd like to bring people together, and money, to talk about that.
Thank you. Madeline, followed by Esther Hernandez.
Good evening, council and city staff. I'm very excited to see this on the agenda. As a capital city, Santa Ana has shown that it has very widespread and deep-seated problems as related to its need for economic restructuring in order to stabilize itself. as related to its need for economic restructuring in order to stabilize itself, to stop capital flight that has plagued the city for decades and left us with myriad scenarios of haunting familiarity plaguing multiple sectors that include not only our residents, but also our Departments of Planning, Housing, Development, Economic and Education, as well as our civic government and urban practitioners who work within the city. To awaken our communities from its continued nightmares related to immigrant status, unemployment, poverty, homelessness, lack of affordable housing, and the rampant proliferation of illegitimate business practices that run, that are run often by ingenious and inventive individuals reaching for a means of stabilization and survival through System D, or what's otherwise known as our black market economy, we will require transformative change. While our Chamber of Commerce and Business Leaders, city planners and government officials have always offered a range of cookie-cutter solutions, such as seeking reform for the workforce development programs, creating top-down sectorial strategies, or seeking from outside the city to bring in a creative class with strategies of new urbanism, for all of the fanfare that greets these solutions, when our cities implement them, they're regularly perpetuating traditional strategies for economic growth which are mischaracterized as economic development strategies. Typically, these strategies fall instead under an umbrella of an export-based model, as well as assumptions inherent in the global paradigm of neoliberalism. As such, they're rooted in assumptions about mobility of capital and desirability and efficiency of competition, and the duty of places to compete for the affectations and benefits of these footloose economic engines. Cooperative development, on the other hand, makes an instrumental contribution to a transformational, city-wide economic change through three primary pathways. An economic pathway that alleviates poverty and stimulates economic growth, a democratic pathway providing a framework for democratic participation, and a social pathway building social capital and trust for all of our community.
Thank you. If you could conclude, Madeline.
Thank you.
Take care. Esther Hernandez, followed by Luz Maria Martinez. And after that, Carlos Melendez.
Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Esther Hernandez, y soy miembro de una cooperativa llamada Madres Unidas Creando Arte, y que nació a raíz de mi necesidad por ayudar a mi esposo que tiene tres trabajos, este, y poder aportar algo a mi familia. Para mí fue una oportunidad como mamá de casa que no tenía, pues, una manera de cómo ayudar, ¿verdad? Y pues a mí me gustaría que ustedes, este, nos apoyaran para nosotros poder progresar como cooperativas, dando lugares, oportunidades para también contribuir a esta ciudad, para que no seamos una de las familias desplazadas, y para también no ser una carga pública, como dicen a veces. Entonces, para mí es importante que ustedes nos puedan apoyar. Gracias.
Gracias.
Good evening. My name is Esther Hernandez. I'm with a cooperative, United Moms Creating Art, and we need your help, and I needed to help... This cooperative is important, because I needed to help my husband, who works three jobs, and to support the family. I saw this as an opportunity as a homemaker, because I have no other way, no other way to help. So I'm asking you to support us, to succeed as a cooperative, so that we can make this a better city, and contribute to the city, so that we are not those displaced families, or we are not, as they say, a public burden. So please, it's important for you to support us.
Thank you. Luz Maria, followed by Carlos Melendez, followed by Anna Ursua.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Luz Maria Martinez, y estoy aquí para la resolución en el apoyo para las cooperativas. Estoy aquí para pedir el apoyo para mi comunidad emprendedora. Estamos buscando una forma de ser autosuficientes económicamente. Desafortunadamente, no tuvimos la educación antes de estar aquí, más sin embargo, estamos buscando esa oportunidad a través de las cooperativas. Ha sido difícil para mí crear un negocio. Lo he estado en la búsqueda durante años, más sin embargo, la limitación económica independiente solo mía es, no es suficiente para crear un negocio. Hay muchas trabas para nosotros, en especial los que carecemos de capital, más sin embargo, tenemos el deseo de crecer y de aportar a la economía, a nuestras familias, cosa que un empleo común con un salario mínimo no es sustentable. Esa es nuestra iniciativa como emprendedores. Hay muchos obstáculos para ser empresarios o pequeños negocios, principalmente por el capital. Hay muchas obstrucciones para poder obtener un financiamiento, y por eso me apoyo a una cooperativa, porque un grupo de personas se reúnen, tienen el mismo sueño, la misma visión, la misma intención de aportar, y generamos cierta cantidad de dinero, y podemos crear cosas diferentes juntos, cosa que independientemente es más difícil si no tienes el capital suficiente. Por eso estoy aquí, para pedir su apoyo, para que se den la oportunidad de conocernos y nosotros conocerlos a ustedes de alguna manera interactuar, para poder llegar a ser prósperos y ser aportación para nuestras familias y para la comunidad. El propósito de crear una cooperativa es ser autosuficiente, manteniendo las familias prósperas, ayudando a la comunidad, a ser económicamente libres, no depender tanto de las aportaciones de la, or de la caridad de la ciudad, en este caso. Lo más importante para mí es ser aportación para mi comunidad, y por eso estoy aquí. Parada por ellos, porque vemos muchas personas que tenemos el deseo de emprender un negocio, más siempre los obstáculos están ahí, y queremos hacer la diferencia.
Luz Maria. Gracias. Esther Roja Luz, gracias.
Gracias.
My name is Luz Maria Martinez, and I'm here in the support of the resolution to support the cooperatives. We are from the community, and this is a way for us to be self-sufficient. We did not have the opportunity to get a formal education before coming here, but this is an opportunity to the cooperative. It's very difficult to open up our own businesses. I've been trying for years. Even with my independent creativity, it's not enough. It's difficult, because we lack the monies to get started, and we want to help our families to create jobs, and a job is not enough to help our families prosper. There are many obstacles to start a business, one of them being a lack of money or financing. A cooperative model is better, because we create things together, we get together, we have the same dreams, the same vision, and we create things together for the benefit of all. And so we'd like to have your support, for you to get to know us, for us to get to know you, so that together we can prosper as a community. The purpose of cooperatives is to be self-sufficient and to have prosperous families and a better economy. So please, we'd like to have your support for the cooperative.
Thank you. Gracias. Now, Carlos.
Buenas tardes, señores. Senor alcalde, señores concejales. Mi nombre es Carlos Melendez. Soy miembro de una cooperativa de aquí de Santa Ana también, y vengo a apoyar a mis compañeras que han pasado antes, para pedirles también el apoyo de ustedes en esta intención que tenemos de hacer cooperativas, ¿verdad? Personalmente, yo pienso que las cooperativas es una forma de poder acceder al comercio, al negocio, ¿verdad? A nivel personal, hemos probado algunas veces, y no nos ha sido difícil, por lo que dijo la compañera anterior, la falta de capital, y la incapacidad que tenemos nosotros algunos de acceder a la banca normal, porque no calificamos por diferentes razones. Entonces, hemos visto una puerta abierta en el cooperativismo, y estamos, este, pensando utilizarlo y pedirles el apoyo de ustedes, ¿verdad? En días pasados, el concejal Solario ya manifestó su apoyo a la cooperativa de mujeres, MUCA, y yo espero que esta noche él materialice también el apoyo al grupo de cooperativas que estamos queriendo formarlos. También entiendo de que la presión económica y social es grande en una ciudad como la nuestra, y que si se nos da la oportunidad de participar en el comercio, en el negocio, eso con el tiempo puede relajar un poco esa presión económica y social, y vamos a tener mejores familias en esta ciudad. Por eso les pido el apoyo, y muchas gracias.
My name is Carlos Malonado, and I'm here as a member of cooperative, and I ask your support, and I'm here to support the other ladies who spoke about the cooperatives as well. I think a cooperative is a better, gives us better access to starting a business, to having a business. As an individual, it's not easy to open up a business because of lack of funds, lack of access to banking services for different reasons. A cooperative opens many doors for us to do this, and so we ask for your support. Mr. Solario, Councilman Solario recently supported women in a cooperative, and that was great, so we ask for the rest of you to support this as well. The city has great needs, and if the cooperative, if you help the cooperatives to get to flourish, then we would have better families in this city, and so we ask for your support.
Anna, you're next.
My name is Anna Ursua.
Anna, I noticed your new haircut.
Oh, yeah, thanks. Summertime. My name is Anna Ursua, Director of the Santa Ana Building Healthy Communities, and I'm here to commend the council for taking on this topic, Mayor Potem for bringing it to the attention of your colleagues, and Mark Morley at the Department of Economic Development for all of his work. As you know, the organizations, adults and youth residents of Building Healthy Communities know that in order to see transformations in the community's conditions of health, we have to address problems at the root, and income inequality is one of the deadliest. And so a commitment to residents of our community has to look like concrete measures to invest in and support the needs of our most marginalized communities. Worker cooperatives is a step in the right direction. Worker cooperatives are businesses owned by its workers. They are autonomous associations of persons united voluntarily to meet their common economic, social, and cultural needs and aspirations through a jointly-owned and democratically-controlled enterprise. Worker cooperatives support community wealth building by creating long-term, stable jobs, have sustainability, sustainable practices, and are connected and accountable to their communities. At a worker cooperative, profits rather than going to distant investors, instead go directly to the workers themselves. As a result, the money stays grounded in the local economy, building community wealth, and contributing to our city's economic developments. We understand the numerous benefits of cooperatives, both firsthand and nationwide. We have seen cooperatives are a successful strategy. We are connected to a network of cooperatives nationwide, including the United States Federation of Worker Cooperatives and the Democracy at Work Institute. Locally, we are working with Cielo at the Santa Ana Building Healthy Communities. They are a technical assistance provider supporting the business development of worker cooperatives. But most importantly, we're laying the groundwork for a worker cooperative network run by residents of our city, where they can make possible the various supports necessary for shared prosperity, including reducing barriers to business licensing, accessing loans such as CDBG, and incentives for city procurements and others. We urge you for your support in economic development that invests in our communities and provides opportunities for all to thrive. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, I'll bring it back to Mayor Potem.
Thank you. I don't have to say anything. Anna did an amazing job in articulating with a worker cooperative, and I just also want to thank Anna, the Building Healthy Communities, and of course, our local worker cooperatives that are here. I've been a big supporter, and as we all know, that worker cooperative is not a new concept, it's been around for a very long time. But just to give you not only the local examples here in Santa Ana, but at a bigger scale, you know, here in Orange County, Rainbow, who was a trash hauler in Huntington Beach that merged with a bigger trash hauler, was a cooperative. And when they sold to that other trash hauler, many of those employees left being millionaires, which is very cool. And so that's just one great example at a bigger scale, and we're not really looking at doing something like that. We're really here at the ground level with our actual residents, but then if you even look in the East Coast, and you look at Chobani, right? How many of you have had Chobani yogurt? That's a worker cooperative, right? Owned by its employees, right? Not stockholders or shareholders, right? Who are not there every day doing the work, but it's the people making the decisions, you know, that, you know, and I always tell folks that if you're not at the table, you're going to be on the menu, right? And so it's so important that we have our residents that are willing to move forward towards upward mobility and look at ways to do worker cooperatives, so that they can not only invest within their own families and help support their families, but help support our community as the money continues to reinvest here. And so one of the reasons I brought, it's no different than capitalism and small businesses and the system that we have here in place here, but we need to put a system in place that supports and really cultivates, you know, worker cooperatives. You know, we have micro grants that we've contributed to small businesses of $5,000. Why wouldn't these worker cooperatives be able to participate? So that's just one great example in regards to the procurement process. They would have to be adjusted to making sure that they, too, would be able to contribute, and this is not subsidizing, you know, worker cooperatives, because I would just say "too" as well. So we've subsidized the Chamber of Commerce, we've subsidized these small businesses, like Downtown Inc., and these other businesses that are legit. No, it's really trying to bring everyone to the fold, and it's really commendable of the specific worker cooperatives that already started here without asking the city for assent or moving us towards the direction where we can provide incentives to help them thrive. And so, Mr. Mayor, I'm definitely supportive. The only thing that I would just add is that if we, I'm not sure what timeframe, I would say 60, but if our staff needs 90 days to go out and continue to work with Anna and the others that they have been talking to, then bring it back to the council committee to flush out these options, and then bring it fully back to the city council. I want to follow the process, and so that would be my only recommendation, but I full heartedly support it.
60 or 90 days?
We'd prefer 90. This is a new territory for us. We want to get it right.
So 90 days.
All right, make that your motion.
So I move, to move this forward, for 90 days, go out into the community, have conversations, and then bring it back to the council committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
We got it. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You have comments?
I have comments.
One already voted. All right, go ahead, Jose.
I want to thank the staff and the council members that brought this forward. I very much support this concept, and I don't know if it'll be part of this process or related processes, but I think as we develop new processes like this, we've got to have some flexibility in that the economy is creative, these type of organizations are creative, and so they all don't really fit into one structure. For example, there's related concepts out there like microenterprises, we have trade associations. We also have a lot of home-based businesses that we, I think, got to support, and I think there's a lot of confusion in our community about if you're a home-based business, can you have one, can you not? Do you need a business license? Don't you? Can you have a home base and an external business? As well as, you know, many small cooperatives, organizations start out of the home. And so we've got to acknowledge that, you know, we're also moving more into a shared economy, and that whole world is evolving. So as we do things like, I just want us to build enough flexibility in the language, so that we're not so myopic, that we miss out on helping others. And then as part of this, let's also consider developing templates for how to do these things well, because I've seen some cooperatives that work well, I've seen some cooperatives that don't. I see some that fail, I see somewhere only the people at the top succeed, and I've seen everything in between. Also, I know what was mentioned was the concept of profit sharing, and that's something that I do want to see, whether it's a cooperative or just a general business, so that's a good concept to support. And then Alan Wu also mentioned the underground economy, and I think anything we could do to legitimize work and give folks in the system to benefit for themselves and the community is a great thing, and that also reduces exploitation in the community. And then finally, you know, there's many in our community that are still looking for legal work, and sometimes these cooperatives or related enterprises can be an avenue for that. Hopefully, one day be an avenue for comprehensive immigration reform, an opportunity... Hopefully, one day be an avenue for comprehensive immigration reform, and opportunities for tax, ID numbers, et cetera. So I'm very supportive and look forward to seeing our economy grow, businesses large and small.
Thank you. Councilor Vincenzo, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm also very supportive of this and I want to thank the speakers who came before us and Mayor Protem for bringing this and staff for doing good work on this. You know, what we're basically doing is we're recognizing what already exists, right? We have a lot of very creative, very entrepreneurial people in town that for one reason or another couldn't be part of the traditional workforce, so they find a way to survive just to not be a burden on, you know, public services, so, or general services. So we, I think, are doing, making a good step here to recognize that and to try to be supportive, as supportive as we can. These same folks who are very entrepreneurial are folks who are underbanked and unbanked and I know we've been trying to make an effort to try to get folks in so they can be eligible for microloans and get more banking services because they get preyed on by these check cashing companies that just, you know, have an outrageous, you know, cost for just cashing a simple check. And so those are things that we're trying to eliminate here as well.
Thank you. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. With that, now let's go on to, would it be 65A? 65A, what would we want to do, a brief presentation?
If we could and if I could do a brief introduction.
Go ahead.
We have four reports before you this evening dealing with the Santa Ana jail. Three of them are for action and one is the update that we're going to start with at 65A, an update on the reuse study. But I'd like to speak to all of them because together they tell a story of what we're trying to do and a recommendation on how we see moving forward from a staff perspective and to get the Council's perspective. The three action items are to look at a two-year expansion of the Marshals, U.S. Marshals contract so that we bring in around 171 additional inmates. This is really a temporary contract. It is while they're doing construction in their facility and it is not a long-term fix for the jail. But it does give us some breathing room while we move forward with the reuse study that you're going to hear this evening. We also would like to do some plumbing work in the jail and you'll hear in the reuse study, it is the one area that is particularly weak in the physical analysis, the physical assessment that they have done. And we need a van in order to operate the jail, even our own holding facility. The reuse study can slow down, it can be beforethoughtful, and we can decide in two years what it works, how it works into Santa Ana's economy and what reuses we would like to see there, how much of it, if any, continues to be a jail, or what is a totally new use. In order to do that and do it well though, we want to make sure that we are really hearing from the Council. What are your ideas? We don't want to get to the end and find out that our ideas we haven't, we haven't thought of and we haven't studied. We haven't looked at whether they would contribute to Santa Ana, to the community, and to the revenues the city's looking from for its assets. And we also want to make sure that we are prioritizing the right things and looking at how to analyze the different uses. Is money more important than community benefit? Is the community more important and we'd be willing to operate at a loss? Would we want to see a particular kind of use on that even if it meant that the city would sell the facility or would no longer be the landlord there? Those kind of questions. So we'd like to introduce people I think you've probably met before from the consulting company so that they can tell you where they are midway through the reuse study. Here, ideas this evening if you have them, but please, over the next few weeks, talk to either staff or contact people with the study so we know we have a complete list of things for us to analyze. And then following this, we'll talk to you about whether or not you would like us to proceed with the discussions that we are in for the temporary use with the Marshals and then the physical improvements for the facility. Do you want to introduce? And with that, Mayor, unless there are questions of how the staff is looking at this, we will introduce the consultant and move into the reuse study.
That's fine.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council, I'd like to welcome our consultant team from Vanner Construction Management. They were retained by the city to assist us with a jail conditions assessment, which is the first part that you've received the executive summary for. And then now they're moving on to the jail reuse options. So with that, I'd like to introduce Lara Jennings from Vanner and she'll introduce her other two colleagues as well as they go through the item. Following their presentation, we will then open up the public comment portion and then we'll bring it back to the City Council for discussion.
Good evening, we're happy to be here in front of all of you today. I am Lara Jennings of Vanner Construction Management. As Jorge told you, this is Jim Aboidis, one of my colleagues, and this is Fred Campbell. These are really my experts.
Just real quick, if I may, I'm going to recuse myself because I know Vaneer, the lady who I believe is very, you know, owns the company and so is, just as an abundance of caution, I'm not going to participate. And Councilman Solorio's outside the room, so we're going to have to wait until...
This is only receiving file, right? Report?
Still.
You still need a form? Jose's right out here.
No.
Is he in charge? Yeah, he's right there.
Right behind you.
The mayor's going to be cruising side. Are you going to be available? So, you know?
I'll be ready to go to the restroom.
I've just been laid, oh my God. I can't receive. Do you want to get right here, Protem? Or? We can't have you leaving because we want to... I understand, I just, oh my goodness. Can you guys give me like one minute? Because I cannot, I can't hold it anymore. Please, one minute. Okay, great, you can begin, thank you.
All right. So, good evening, I'm Lara Jennings of Vanner Construction Management. This is Jim Aboidis and this is Fred Campbell, colleagues of mine that are really experts in facilities assessments. We're here today to give you a status of where we are in terms of the reuse study, explain the findings that we have on the facility, walk you through some evaluation tools we put together, and get some input on options and priorities. I really would like to say a quick thank you to the city and the police department. They've really been supportive in getting us data on operations and really getting us access to the facility so we could really understand the nuances of the Santa Ana jail. There we go. So, a status to date. First, we have done a jail tour and a kickoff. We reviewed the current issues and objectives. Then we moved into and collected the data and analyzed the data on population, staffing, and operations. We have already reviewed the physical jail spaces and gone through to see what the flow and operations are there. Today, we're here before you to do a workshop to figure out the priorities and the options. Next, we'll be identifying and analyzing these options and then finally, we'll be creating a formal report for you. With that quick update on status, I'm going to move it along to Jim, who's going to talk to you about some of the findings he has to date.
We turned in a couple of reports. One was a comprehensive condition assessment of the entire facility. It's about an 85-page report. And also you have a executive summary of that report. And in that report, if you, on page 13, is basically our conclusions of the facility, of the jail for continued use or reuse. And what we did here is we looked at your facility and we did an analysis of each one of the function use areas and rated them. And this is our rating scale, zero to three. Extremely inadequate would be a zero point and then extremely adequate would be a three point. And we created this chart and this chart is in the report as well. This goes across 14 different function use areas. And these 14 function use areas, as you can see is on the bottom here, would include the administration space, lobby, the visiting space, central control, and so on through the facility, including housing, kitchen, the laundry. We evaluated that each one of those spaces, one through 14, through the, evaluated the space and the systems, HVAC, the plumbing, electrical, noise control, fire safety, ADA handicap, structures and security. And as you look, see on this chart, the, under plumbing, 1.5 is pretty much deficient right across the board in every one of those spaces that had plumbing. And I think that's one of the action items today for you to respond to. Overall, you'll have some deficiencies in space and as a parallel to space, your facility comes in about 300 square, 350 square feet per inmate. The rule of thumb is about 400 square feet per inmate for this vintage of jail. It's a 20-year-old facility built in 1997. And today, if we were to build a jail currently being designed, and we have a number of them being designed now, they're running around 500 square feet per inmate. And the reason is, is because custody has changed, there's many laws, inmates are staying longer in the jail. In addition to that, we're offering more programs, classroom space, more mental health response and medical response, and also ADA adds to those spaces. So in comparison to where you're at at 350, to today's standards, you're a little on a deficient site. How you maintain that is by reducing the population and you'd have more space and repurposing some of those spaces for other uses. One of the things that we found about this facility is that I've been to over 100 facilities across the nation and almost everyone in California. And you have an exemplary facility here, designed very well at the time. As a matter of fact, this is a facility that most jail administrators would love to operate. It responds well to inmates, it's more normal, you have carpeting and porcelain fixtures, wood doors, and those are the things that you'd find at home rather than real, really hardened space where it's a steel door and it's slam shut and it's noisy. This is a great jail. If I had to spend some time, this is where I'd spend it. So what we've done here is we're looking at some detention, if continued detention options, and these are options that were brought to us. Look at it as a temporary holding and we've already done that piece. A type-two facility and that is just how you're operating it if you move forward with the federal marshals contract. A type-two without city personnel, in other words, leasing it out to somebody to take the facility over and operate it. The CDCR transitional reentry, that would be operated by CDCR completely, also looking at other, you have a tunnel that goes to Orange County, maybe Orange County would want to lease the facility or use portion of it, and of course, the Federal Bureau prisons. These are all criminal justice detention operations and there are other ones. These are out of the box and these were brought to us as well. Maybe that we could use it as a mental health facility. How about a data center? Police evidence and storage. Certainly, there's a lot of secure space where you can lock up a lot of storage. Homeless shelter, youth hostel, and hotel. These are all options that are brought to us. We want to focus in on these options so that we can study each one of these and adequately bring back a report to the City Council here. Just the next slide. Okay, Fred, you want to do this one?
The important point here is that we are now at the point in this study, we're at the last critical analytical task and that really involves identifying and comprehensively evaluating the four priority jail reuse options that the city is interested in receiving the evaluation, our recommendations on. And we need additional input, we need to make sure over the next week or two that we have identified all of the potential options and ideas from the City Council yourself. We also need to make sure we understand the options that would come from the public input tonight. And with that, we will be able to move forward. Now, we prepared for you a handout that I think you received today that lays out several items. First, it shows you what Jim just reviewed is the various jail detention options that have been identified today, also those other potential jail reuse options, the out-of-box options that we have identified. The handout also lays out the assessment criteria that you see on this slide that we will be applying in the, our evaluation of the four priority options. In that handout also, you'll see that we're asking the City Council to provide your priority rating so that with, within this criteria, if, depending on what the analysis shows, we have a way of bringing in your rated priority criteria and concerns in the entire evaluation process. And in total, I think, as we move forward, if we can get that information, we'll have a document that clearly I think will meet your long-term needs in terms of assessing the reuse potential and options for your facility as part of this project.
So I know we have some public comment before we bring it to the City Council, so let us hear from the public. First, we have Madeline Spencer, followed by Robert Tijian, and then Robert Herrera. You guys can be ready. Madeline?
Good evening again. So, the jail, it cost our city over $82 to $100 million, which we've been paying off through a bond, we've been paying off the bond through subsidizing it with our general fund as well as the ICE contract that we've had with the federal government. This has been going on for over 20 years and there was never any revenue brought into the city by this jail. So if we look at the whole entrepreneurial spirit of the jail being brought into our city as a venture, it's a failed venture. I know that there's still needs to be, the jail still needs to be paid off and there needs to be some kind of a revenue stream that's brought in through the jail. And one of the things that was mentioned just now was about it's still being used as a criminal health detention center and there's been rumors that the county is now going to buy that or use the federal government contract and reuse the jail to do the exact same thing that was being done before. I hope that that isn't the way that the jail is going to be reimagined and reused and I hope that some of those other opportunities, that the return on investment is really looked at, for example, for something like a data center. And I'm bringing up the data center even though I, the idea of a homeless shelter and all these different things that were mentioned are great, but from hearing in the business community and also across the city, what one of the biggest problems is, and also thinking about the way that a data center can serve government, the college, the high schools, and the business community as a whole in this city, the fact that we're in a, we have a technological revolution going on and we're back in 2000... a techno, we have a technological revolution going on, and we're back in 2010 in the city of Santa Ana is a problem. So to me, I just am saying, I hope that you guys in that study are going to be looking at the actual amount of money that can be actually utilized, the ways that different folks in different areas of this whole city and the region, because the county will most likely use a cloud computing system as well. The facility is already steel and, and concrete, which is perfect for that kind of a center, and it takes us out of the jail business altogether.
Thank you, Madeline. You can conclude. I don't see Mr. Robert Tygen, if I could follow by Robert Herrera, and then Jan Maslin, and Fabi Hakom, and Daisy Ramirez.
Hello, council. I'm here to speak to both items 65A and 65C. The jail reuse study and your consideration to expand and increase jail services to the U.S. Marshal Service by 173 beds. The city of Santana should not sustain a jail business model, because there's no clear public safety benefit to having a for-profit jail in Santana. Jail businesses, like the ICE contract, only justify and are dependent on the criminalization of vulnerable communities like people of color, immigrants, the homeless, people with mental health needs, and the youth. We need to continuously move toward an expediated phase-out of the punitive jail business model, and instill a model that centers prevention and intervention, reentry services for the formerly incarcerated. Expanding jail services to the U.S. Marshal Service is only acting as a placeholder for the potential of ICE to return to our city jail when the marshal's contract is over. What you are essentially doing is pursuing this contract to create more unsustainable jobs. The police department already receives more than half of the city's budget. Hiring more police officers in the short term would mean a spike in unaffordable pension plans in the future. The city has already noted that it would have a difficult time paying the pension plans. The city cannot make short-sighted decisions, because doing so will push the city much closer to bankruptcy. The city of Santana has an opportunity tonight to intentionally and strategically invest in addressing the needs of Santana residents, the youth, the homeless, those with mental health needs, by centering solutions that are proactive, preventative and cost-effective in the long-term, that are long-term public safety solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Roberto. Jan? Jan, followed by Fabi Hakom and Daisy Ramirez.
Good evening. My name is Jan Maslin. I'm a Costa Mesa resident and Director of Social Change Development for Civic Community Initiatives for Visiting Immigrants in Confinement. We're a national nonprofit, working to abolish the U.S. Immigration Detention System, which we believe is just one part of the mass incarceration system, that's inherently racist, system profiting off of the suffering of our communities. And I'm speaking to 65A and C. This city is in the process of a jail reuse study. To make a decision now on how to reuse the jail, even if it's for only a two-year commitment, would be premature. The city should not be making any decisions on the city jail until the full study is complete. We ask that the city council postpone the vote on the U.S. Marshals' contract, or vote no on signing an expanded contract with the U.S. Marshals for additional bed space. We're also concerned about Vanner's study on the conditions of the jail. The original RFQ that Vanner responded to required the contractor to do a study on the human conditions of the jail, such as overall medical care, food quality, solitary confinement practices, and other issues, that would help this city determine whether it wanted to continue to be a part of an industry profiting off of those types of living conditions for human beings. We want to encourage the city to add this requirement back into the scope of Vanner's work. Without a full study on the jail conditions, the city cannot make an informed decision. We also want to point out that Vanner has made no attempts beyond this city council meeting to consult with the community about what the community needs, or hopes to see for how the current jail facility is used in the future. This is the first time the community has had the opportunity to learn about Vanner's methodology until now. It also is the first time the community is learning that the city has been in very detailed conversations with the U.S. Marshals about expanding the city's contract. This was supposed to be a transparent process. We encourage the city to ensure that Vanner's speaking to the community, and we encourage the city manager's office that is liaising with Vanner to set up more opportunities-
Jan, you please wrap up your light tray.
-for community meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Fabi Hakom, followed by Daisy Ramirez.
My name is Fabi Hakome. I am the program coordinator for Orange County Immigrant Youth United, and I am here to speak on items 65A and 65, 65C. Well, first, I want to say thank you to your staff. They have been very helpful, specifically Jorge, in providing information that we have requested. However, I think that the part that was the most concerning to me was the 65C item, contracting with the U.S. Marshals. As a lot of us know, the hot mess, that is Santana, you know, the, the whole thing of like, a lot of y'all won't be here in two years, meaning that if there are city council members, like council members Solario and Villagas, that are going to be either staying, or there are going to be more seats that are going to be bought by the Police Officers' Association, this is concerning to us, because you're kind of just pushing two years. We don't know what's going to happen. A lot of y'all won't be here, that have been supportive of ending the ICE contract. If council members like them stay, then we don't know if in two years, they're going to try to bring ICE back into, into the city and into the jail. So let's, let's stop, I said it earlier and I forgot, but it's kind of like, let's stop putting off like the inevitable, inevitable, and just, you know, use it for something else. A data center sounds really good. Come back to the community and actually ask what we need. I do live here now, although I'm still very proud to be from Silverado. And just, just listen to what we have to say, right? It's, it's a lot of money, it's a lot of decisions. If you can, postpone it, have a meeting with us, or have a near actually come out and talk to the community directly. Thank you.
Thank you. Followed by Daisy.
Good evening. My name is Daisy Ramirez, and I'm the Jail's Project Coordinator at the American Civil Liberties Union of Southern California. I am here to speak on items 65A and 65C. The ACLU finds the facility conditions assessment issued by Vanner to be inadequate and troubling. As a construction management company, Vanner is ill-equipped to assess the needs of the community and project, project and/or assume future jail populations. In their conditions assessment, Vanner identified deficiencies in the medical, medical, mental health and dental space in the jail, among other areas. The findings are based on the jail's rated capacity of 480 individuals and area per space relative to what Vanner deemed 19 comparable medium-sized correctional facilities. The finding assumes that the facility will be at full-rated capacity. This is extremely problematic, given that as of yesterday, the jail was at 41% occupancy relative to the BSCC's rated capacity, and 39% occupancy relative to the facility's maximum capacity. Identifying areas as deficient in space disregards the fact that the city is currently struggling to fill vacant beds. Although troubling, the finding is not surprising. As a construction company, Vanner has an inherent conflict of interest to make such an assessment, an assessment that unfortunately incentivizes the criminalization of Santana residents. The city needs to move away from the jail business model and prioritize the needs of community members. The people of Santana deserve a council that puts them first, a council that invests in opportunities for them to thrive, rather than a council that condones the incarceration of folks to pay off debts resulting from poor decisions and failed projections. We urge you, we urge you to use this opportunity to invest in the people you were elected to represent. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So at this, at this time, I'm going to bring it back to the dais and open it up for a comment with my colleagues. Anyone wish to start? No comments?
Go ahead.
Wow.
So we're at 65A, correct?
Correct.
We're going one at a time, right?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam, I broke Tim Martinez. So, yeah, I believe that we should continue with the reuse study to see what's going on. Wait till it's complete. Nothing wrong with being thorough, but at the same time, you know, we need to, somebody needs to pay for that jail. Someone has to pay the bill, because we're all paying for it, everyone here in the city's paying for it, and, you know, we cannot afford any more self-inflicted, you know, action. So I'm for the, I'm open to the, see what else the, the study brings. There's a lot of good things on here, but in the meantime, we need, we need, we need to pay for the, for the building. It's just there. I mean, this thing was here a long time ago, 20 years ago, and there was, and we already spoke about the different, the reason why the jail was built. It was a different time, the Orange County jail didn't have all the facilities it has now. Santa Ana was kind of forced to have their own facility, and then the jail expansion took place at the county, and then the city of Santa Ana was stuck with their own building, so they had to get creative and see how they were going to pay for that. So, you know, it's really tough being in this position, because someone needs to be responsible for the city. Someone has to take care of this. And so in the meantime, while we're waiting for other options, for other ideas, we should move forward with, some of the recommended actions are on here. But yes, I'm for the, continue the study and see what comes of it.
Thank you, Councilman. Any more comments? Councilman Sarmiento?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And I want to thank staff for working with us. I know, I forget when we gave the direction for the repurpose study to be done. Do we know?
April 26, April 4.
Okay. So it's been a while, right, that, that we requested this, and, you know, I'm looking at the status report and the scope of work, and it looks like three of the first tasks, three of the six tasks are completed at 100%, but what I heard is some tours were done, you know, some, some assessments were done, but that's, you know, that's not a lot to do in, you know, over a year, so I'm a little disappointed on the timing. I'm also disappointed that we don't have anything that reflects, as somebody mentioned, from the RFQ or the RFP that was circulated, you know, having to do with the community outreach. I wish I would have seen a line item there, and for there to have been good, robust discussions and, and opportunities for our residents and our stakeholders to also comment and opine as to what they see would be a long-term, you know, possibility for that facility. You know, the, I think one of the items on the RFP was also to talk about the jail conditions, right? You know, what the conditions of the inmates were, because there was a lot of discussion on treatment, medical attention, and so, you know, I hope that there, with additional time, those things could be assessed, those things could be brought to our attention, but I'd hate to wait another year for it. So I really, really am a little disappointed with the update. I wish we would have had, you know, some more information, some more detail, and again, more from what you heard from our community. You know, I, I do think that there are some items here that are listed, out-of-the-box reuse studies, or reuse purposes, that, you know, may make sense, may be feasible, feasible, and may be reasonable, but I guess what we want to hear, and I guess what I want to hear is, what are the parameters, looking at that facility? What could that be? What could it be over time? And that's a long-term question. We have a short-term problem, and those long-term solutions aren't going to solve the short-term problem that we have. But again, I hope that staff can work with our, with the firm that we've retained. Again, I don't think we're moving at the right pace. I don't think that the results that they provided today are satisfactory, and I hope that there's some, some improvement, because it really is underwhelming to see this and disappointing.
Madam City Manager?
I just wanted to clarify that it was, we contracted with them in April, so it's been three months. I do agree that it's the easy part of the study that has been done, because it's looking at what we have, and the difficult pieces are moving forward on what should it be. Should we be able to move forward with some of the other items tonight, I think you would see a much more robust study and be much more satisfied with the results when they come back, because the schedule was very tight, and it had to be, because you had to adopt a budget with a huge deficit in it, and we couldn't have all the time in the world to figure out how we were going to accommodate. Part of that was the money that we were losing from the jail. But we hear you clearly on the community outreach, and we'll make sure that we are, we add more outreach into our proposal going forward before we bring something back, regardless of what you decide on the study going forward.
And if we can adjust their scope of work, because we already have a defined scope of work for them, maybe just, you know, have our staff-
We can do that, absolutely.
-augmenting information, so they can incorporate that into their findings.
Great. Thank you, Councilman Sarmiento. Councilman Solario?
Yes, thank you. Really agreeing with much of what Councilmember Sarmiento has mentioned. I do want to see additional outreach and a variety of outreach. Obviously, we know that some groups have been more involved with this than others, but, you know, our CommLink Board, some of the neighborhood associations may have interest, the Chamber of Commerce, we have our two downtown business associations, we have some, you know, like our, our community watchdog programs that are public safety-focused and oriented, you know, and others, you know, maybe just some, some general event. In terms of the work to date, I know when I saw the city was beginning to work on this, I did see that the scope was pretty limited, but I think it was with the idea that they had wanted to get information to the council quickly, so that decisions could be made. I, I do appreciate, though, that before they went too far ahead in terms of making conclusions about reuse, that you came to check in with the council formally, and then also opened it up to the community for, for input, so that was really good. The, the way I, I see it is that, you know, in, in the short term, we're stuck with it as a jail, whether it's, you know, empty or full, or halfway full, I mean, it is what it is, and it's going to take some costs, a lot of expenditures to remake it into anything else. And so as Councilmember Sarmiento was saying, just in terms of the parameters going forward, you know, it's things like, you know, what are these other reuse opportunities? What are they going to cost? How long would it take to permit them? What would the environmental process look like? All those things take time and money, and as we look at it really over the next 10 years of this, you know, we need to know about that. And I think the out-of-the-box ideas are the ones that I most commonly hear, so I think they're a good start. I think when the report is done, we may like the outcomes, we may not, we should continue to do outreach if needed. In terms of the, the short-term uses, which really are the criminal justice detention uses, I do want to have a lot of focus on working with CDCR and maybe having them bring some reentry folks. I think that's something progressive and positive that we can do. You know, there's, you know, most inmates, they leave with a few dollars, very little training, very little idea of where they're going to live, what they're going to do, where they're going to receive services. And there's other counties where they have reentry facilities, where the last six months or the year, they go to their community, they reorient themselves to their families, they find places to live, they get IDs, they figure out what services they can get, where they might live and work, et cetera, and I think that would be a very positive thing for our community as a, a public safety benefit for them and the community as a whole. So I'm particularly excited about that. I don't know that the whole jail needs to be that, but you know, we have, you know, a lot of beds and, and modules and floors there, that at least partially we can do that. And then some of the current federal and other contracts that we have, maybe we keep them. And I think we also need to know for the contracts that are there, what are the timelines for them? How much do they pay? What are the restrictions? So we also need to know about the existing contracts as well, and I know, you know, the red light is, is on, so I will stop there. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilman Solario. And again, this is just a receiving file, a file, correct? And so I would just make my point, and I think I, I've been consistent from day one, my, my position has not changed, and it will not change, and so I just want to make that very clear to the public, is that we need to get out of the business. It is not sustainable to, to, to really run a jail on contracts that, you know, have a, a life cycle on them, and we're dependent on the federal government or state government that at any given time, they can say, you know, hey, we don't want to do business with you, and we make these investments. That's not a sustainable thing that our city should continue to be in, knowing the position that we're currently in now, and so we need to take that into consideration, and, and when I make decisions- And so we need to take that into consideration, and, um, and when I make decisions, I'm looking at the totality of, of, of the city and its sustainability, not just now, but 20 years from now. The decisions that were made 20 years ago, you know, the, the chickens have come home to roost. Not only that, and when you look at the capacity of this jail, we're not even in compliance with ADA. We, we, you know, we could get fined. We're not in compliance. And, and we're at capacity, so I just want to state that to our city attorney and our city manager, that this report is indicating that we're not in compliance with ADA. And so for us, you know, when we, we look at educational opportunities or whatever, the report is, is stating here that it's not adequate, that the space is not adequate. And so, um, I, I get that, and I appreciate, um, they providing this condition assessment because it really helps me understand what can we actually do there. Uh, but also as well, that, you know, the space that we have is also inadequate, and we're in, in, in not in compliance with ADA, which means that, you know, we've been running, uh, at full capacity at times at 350 square feet when it should be 400. And so kind of inhumane conditions in many respects, um, you know, so I, I want to make that clear as well. Whether they're inmates or not, you know, the, you know, the standard is 400, and I understand that this jail is 20 years old, but maybe we shouldn't be at that capacity, knowing that we have to be in compliance, knowing that that's what the standards are. So why did we get to that level, right? Because we needed to generate money, uh, to help pay for the services, but in the re- when we look at this in totality, the reality is that when, the city's not in the business to make a dollar. It's, it's in the business to recover its cost. So let's that, make that very clear. Cities are not in the business to make money. That's not our role. It's customer service. Yes, we do provide services if it pertains to planning and other stuff like that, but we have these fee schedules, right? It's to recover cost. And so we have to look at what we're doing here, and where do we see this five, 10 years from now? And poss- the possibility is, 16 months from now, I'm not going to be on this dais. And I think it's important for us to understand that the sustainability, financial sustainability of this city is vital towards its, for its future. And the decisions that we make today have huge implications two, three, five, 10 years from now, that we're dealing with decisions that were made 20 years ago. The chickens will come home to roost, and we're now dealing with those decisions that were made 20 years ago here today. So I want you all to know that any decisions that we make here today, when we talk about our preferred future, that we don't know what our, what our future holds, yes, we do in government, because it's the policies that we make will dictate what our future's gonna be two, three, five, 10 years down the road. So let's understand that, and, you know, and I'll leave it at that, but I would just hope that, and I, and I want to bring to our attention that, you know, um, that I hope this council does take in consideration some of the, uh, options that are out here, and that we go back to veneer and provide them, you know, the survey that they're asking, uh, what this council in regards to this priority ranking. I will do that first thing tomorrow because I believe it's important to give you that feedback so that you understand, uh, where we're at. But for me, um, what's important for me is, again, the sustainability of, of, of the city is very important for me, and looking at out-of-the-box reuse options, I, I really believe the data center, and I know you mentioned in your report about some, some technical issues. We have plumbing issues, and here we have to spend $150,000, right? So there's, there's deficiencies within plumbing, there's some deficiencies within technology, um, as well. But look, we are in a digital revolution. It is here to stay. We had the industrial revolution, we're now in the digital revolution. And guess what? This city is far behind when it comes to technology, and we have not really come up to the 21st century. We have an opportunity to look at this jail, at, at, at creating a data center that not only helps city government, county government, school governments, but also the small businesses that are here and, and utilize that facility, which doesn't need a lot of technology to store data. Um, it has the, the current infrastructure. We may need to make some changes, but I'm not in the construction field, I'm not a practitioner within the technological field, but I really believe that is an option that we should definitely consider because I think it would be, uh, the, the, the least impact in regards to the city, um, having to retrofit that specific building. And so those are just my comments. I will ask our mayor, again, this is a receiving file, ask our mayor to come back so that we can move forward with 65B and on. Mr. Mayor?
I was kind of sort of, but Jose went over, so I said, "I'm gonna go."
All right. All right. Um, Madam Clerk, where are we? Is it, um-
65B.
All right. I would entertain a motion on item 65B.
So moved.
Is there a, there was a motion, a second, those in favor, please say aye.
Mr. Mayor, could I have comment just very quickly? What we're doing here and, and is really replacing pipes that have to be replaced. And so I just want to just state that for the record, um, in our facility, they're inadequate even according to this report here, definitely needs to get done, and so I'm supportive of that, and just, but want to say for the record that, you know, we need to do this because assist, the, the current piping system is definitely inadequate. Thank you.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Item 65C, approved terms and conditions for proposed additional bed space with U.S. Marshals. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any comment? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
No.
One no, motion carries. Let's go on to 65D. Uh, this is the authorization purchase of a prisoner transport van. Uh, it's $46,000 plus a $1,000 contingency. Is there a motion?
So moved.
All second, those in favor-
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment on this. Um, Madam City, uh, Manager, on this here, you're asking for a one-time purchase, per a, a payment of a, a van to transport, um, inmates. Um, can I just ask, this is, um, for current, the, the current inmates we have, or is this in, was in contingent towards the Marshall-
Contract.
Contract?
It's for the current inmates that we have. We need this, this van regardless of any vote on the, uh, additional beds that we were-
Okay, just wanted to state that for the record.
All right. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Uh, 65E, this is support the California State Senate Bill Four regarding the CalOptima Board composition. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved with comment.
Second.
All right, go ahead and comment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to get an update from Jorge, if you can. I know you gave us, uh, or we received an update from one of our lobbyists regarding what the status of the, um, of the Senate bill is, but more importantly, what the effort to reconfigure the CalOptima Board. And coincidentally, we had some of the CalOptima staff here today. We realize that so many of our residents are recipients, um, of, of the aid that, um, and services that CalOptima offers. Um, what's the status of the, uh, the board's effort to reconfigure, reconfigure some of the seats?
Thank you, Councilmember, Mayor, members of the city council. Um, subsequent to the Legislative Council Committee, the Board of Supervisors took the item up for consideration once again. Um, and the original move was to add all of the members of the Supervisory Board onto the CalOptima Board. They have since changed that position and are leaving it as is, and will re, um, look at this matter in January. Um, so at this point, the Board of Supervisors at the county level is not making any recommended changes. Um, the bill is, is, my understanding, still moving forward. Um, as you mentioned, the city of San Ana does have a large amount of, of recipients of the CalOptima benefits. Between the city of San Ana and the overall, um, amount of people that are served, over 800,000 people, the city serves quite a number of those folks, as well as represents a, a large majority of the Latino recipients, uh, in the program. Uh, across CalOptima, the total proportion of Latinos that receive benefits are about 53%. Uh, San Ana does comprise a, a large majority of that. But we do also have Vietnamese residents, uh, as well as other ethnicities that participate in CalOptima.
So what I would suggest is that we continue to support, and we support the Senate bill that's, uh, proposed by Senator Mendoza, because, again, we don't know if the efforts will continue to try to reconfigure, whether they won't, and, um, just make sure, as, you know, out of an abundance of caution, um, we, uh, want to make sure that the board provides services to its, to our residents and to its recipients. Um, so just to make sure that, um, the board, uh, remains in the configuration that it's in with the seats that exist. So I'll move the item.
I second. All those in favor, please indicate by a comment. Yes, Councilwoman Solario?
Yeah, I want to thank, uh, Councilmember Sarmiento for bringing this forward. Uh, as was discussed earlier, healthcare is a big deal in the country and, in our community, and so many of our residents, uh, use CalOptima. You know, we've found from city stats, it's 43% of our residents are in CalOptima, so we ought to care about it. I think the status quo is better than what some of the supervisors were recommending. Uh, but I'd even like the staff and our legislative advocate to consider saying maybe there ought to be somebody from Latino background on there, or large cities that have heavy concentration of CalOptima, uh, customers, uh, so that we're adequately represented, because, uh, the status quo, frankly, doesn't represent it well enough, and this may be an opportunity to, uh, fix this condition for our, uh, our residents. Thank you.
So we have a motion, a second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries unanimously. 75A, this is a public hearing to consider adopting a resolution establishing and amending San Ana Municipal Code, Chapter 39, water and sewer fees for fiscal year 2017-18. Um, Madam Clerk, do we have any written communications?
I have not received any. I do have a speaker card from Aleah Segley, but I believe he left the meeting.
Well, I'm gonna open up the public hearing regardless and ask, is there anybody that wishes to address us on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and bring it to council for consideration.
And Mayor, may I just make one statement?
Sure.
I'd like to make sure, um, that we clarify in our, on our agenda in our minutes, that this resolution is establishing water and sewer fees, that it is not amending the San Ana Municipal Code as suggested in the title.
Got it.
We only amend the code by ordinance, and that may have created some confusion and some calls that we received today, and I just noticed that this evening. So I'd like to amend that to take out that language, please.
Can you please take that out, Madam Clerk? Okay, so done. So with that, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for consideration.
Do we need to amend the motion, then, to reflect the new wording?
I, we can, but I think, the clerk, can you just read the motion the way you're gonna record it, please?
The motion will be to adopt the resolution that's being proposed.
We're just gonna delete the language that, that says "and amending San Ana Municipal Code." We're just gonna delete that from the title and all of our minutes and what-
So it's just a public hearing to consider adopting a resolution establishing water and sewer fees for fiscal year 2017-18, period.
So I'll move it with that, um, change in the title.
All right, we have a second, and we have a comment, Mayor Protem?
I don't, not a second, I just want, I have comment, I, I have-
Counselor B, yes, oh, second, go ahead.
Yeah, I have comment on, on this, and so, uh, this is establishing just, um, sewer and water fees, but when do these go into effect?
Thirty days.
Thirty days. Okay. Um, my second question, um, is that, and I would say maybe three, four years ago, the city went into, uh, did a bond, it would be, we, uh, in regards to water and, and to sewer, um, or we did a study, I, I, uh, one or the two, three or four years ago. And was that part of the goals and objectives based on that study was to, to move us in this direction? Um, so why are we, I, I guess the question for me is, uh, why are we in, um, you know, why are we moving forward with these water and sewer, uh, fees, and it will take effect in 30 days?
Thank you, Mayor Protem and, and members of council. Mayor, um, are you referring to rate adjustment that went in effect three years ago?
Mm-hmm.
And that is separate at this one, and I have, uh, a bill explain what this is.
Okay.
This is the routine increases, uh, kind of a, uh, yearly increase that needs to happen.
Okay.
Approved by council.
Yes, these fees are administrative fees such as application or permit fees to conduct water-related business. Uh, for, for example, if someone is putting a mirror, they need to put, pay a fee for that mirror, application fee, and the cost of installation of mirror. Those are the kind of fees that-
So what we're doing here is just recovering our costs?
Yes.
So I, and that's what I just, I'm wanting to explain because three years ago, because I got calls today, that, you know, you, we did a rate adjustment three years ago, and are we, you're doing this again to us. So this is two different things, as Fred indicated. We did that three years ago-
That is correct.
And this here is just moving forward with the fees to recover our costs.
That's correct.
When they do a permitting. That, thank you very much.
Sure.
All right, thank you for that clarification. Any more comment?
Yeah, just another clarification thing, um, and I'm reading the staff report again from what I've heard. It's still unclear to me, though, whether this, this is just restating the fees that we currently charge, or whether there are any increases being proposed.
Um, most of the fees that are listed here are already in effect, and that the, the amount has not changed. There is few that have been added by the addition or the amendment of Chapter 39. A handful that we added such as fire hydrant test fee and windness test fees.
So those, those were things that we didn't charge for before?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's a restatement of the existing fees, and for items that we weren't previously charging fees for-
That's correct.
Now to recover fees for those things.
Exactly.
Um, we are doing that to recover-
It's cost recovery.
Fees. Uh, and is there a schedule for when the regular water fees would increase again, or that's subject to the, to the fee study that is, is being conducted?
These fees or the water rates?
Future fee increases from these.
These fees are adjusted on annual basis.
So these may get readjusted again for the following fiscal year?
That's correct, through the budget process.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, just to, just to make a clarification, the, the rate increases was mainly original three years ago, was an infrastructure improvement.
Right.
You know, pipe replacements, uh, pump replacements, things like that nature. And we said we're gonna come back to council after five years, actually, three years, and see whether the fees are, uh, appropriate. We can increase the fee or, or even reduce the fees. We, we haven't seen, seen the reason right now to come to council for increase, yet maybe in, in one or two years-
So this is just a restatement, okay.
Maybe one or two years, we reevaluate the whole process again, we come back to the council, and say, maybe we should increase or decrease the general fees. That's, that's where we are.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion, a second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Madam City Clerk, are we now on the-
Housing Authority.
Housing Authority Meeting? Okay, I'm going to convene the Housing Authority Meeting, and I would entertain a motion on the consent counter items, one and two.
So moved. Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Item number three, that's a Yardi contract amendment. Item number three, the business counter, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. And now we're to public comments for the council. I'm gonna turn things over to Mayor Protem Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Um, Alan Wu, looks like Alan has left, Brooke Weitzman, followed by Lizzie M. Lyles.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Brooke Weitzman. I'm an attorney at the Elder Law and Disability Rights Center. I last spoke to you back in September. As I've discussed with you before, and you know, criminalization of homelessness is an ineffective, expensive, and unconstitutional option in terms of how to deal with the problem of housing. In September, many of us came and spoke to you when you discussed the resolution. The ACLU pointed out that the resolution was moot except for the goal of increasing The ACLU pointed out that the resolution was moot except for the goal of increasing surveillance and increasing enforcement and that those things cause trauma. We know that those actions contradict the U.S. Interagencies Council on Homelessness, the county's tenure plan and the city's plan, which all promote decriminalization and a housing-first model. At the same time, OCO told you that the religious communities found the use of threats to herd people into areas that have since become refugee-like camps were wrong and harmful and asked you to look for solutions. I asked you to reconsider and reminded you that your statements from just a few years before supported that there were basic human rights and dignity and that you were looking for solutions for housing and storage. Yet, as many of us feared since that resolution passed in September, the actions by the city have been systematic efforts to cause more problems for homeless people and to increase the criminalization. The city has slowly relocated residents using threats of citation and arrest. As people have been pushed out of the areas with shade and grass, fences have been erected to ensure they can't return. More threats and citation and arrest have pushed the people into the courtyard terminal regardless of whether the terminal was over capacity or affected the mental health of those people. The people who were not moved into the courtyard were forced into the Plaza de Flags where they now live in an area that's only cement outside of any of the grass and shade that could protect them from the elements under this constant scrutiny from the overhead cameras and from the increased police enforcement. Over the past month, law enforcement has increased the issuance of citation, expanded the no notice seizure and destruction of property, demanded that people take down the umbrellas even on the hottest days. I've watched workers throw away personal items by tossing them over the fence into trucks. Because this not only violates the Constitution and also creates a public health crisis endangering our most vulnerable community members...
Brooke, can you conclude your comments?
Certainly. We had no choice but to file a lawsuit seeking an injunction to end these actions. We've requested that the city cease enforcement of the Municipal Code Ten Five Five One immediately, discontinue the seizures until there's adequate protocol to give pre and post deprivation notice and store in a meaningful way for recovery, to stop actions that enforce homeless, enforce homeless individuals with medical conditions into direct sunlight. We look forward to working with the city to find real solutions to these problems and to making sure that everyone can live with dignity knowing their constitutional rights will not be violated.
Thank you, Brooke.
Thank you. Lizzie? Followed by Carlos Aguilar and Barbara Lamar.
My name is Lizzie Lyles and I am a member of Central City Association and I'm here to talk about fireworks in Santa Ana, safety and possibly banning. On the Fourth of July of this year, in my neighborhood, I couldn't leave my house because of the problems of fireworks, the noise, the smoke, all of, all of the, the trimmings of fireworks. It was like World War III in my area. The fireworks began possibly about a month before and they're still continuing right now. And I am concerned about that in, in Santa Ana and I think we need to start a conversation. I know I've heard that there has been conversations prior to, but I think we need to seriously do that. The day after the Fourth, I walked the city of Santa Ana and you all need to pay me for picking up bottles and cans for doing that. But I walked the city and the city streets are debris, trash, really a mess. And we need to do something about it and that's why I'm here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out, Ms. Lyles.
They're still popping those fireworks. It's irritating.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Lyles. Thank you for coming out.
Yeah, thank you. Next is Carlos Aguilar. Oh, yes, Carlos Aguilar. Is Carlos here? If not, followed by Barbara Lamar. And then followed by Gilbert.
Good evening. I'm Barbara Lamir.
Lamir.
I'm a fifty-two-year resident and I'm concerned about our Centennial Regional Park. It opened on, here's one of my children's little paper, May Thirty-First through June First, nineteen eighty, thirty-seven years ago. And we're still with Rancho San Diego. I'm not against education. That is our park space. They're talking about 2.6 acres. That's only the part the building's not on. Not all the parking they're taking up, all over the park. Their buildings are falling apart. They're temporary. They have sewer problems. They have water problems. They had that five years ago and they're still holding off. We need to really think about it. We have that land conversion coming up. If you don't understand what it is, we have people in parks and rec and write it out and tell you the whole story, what's going on here. I truly, as a resident right up the street, don't totally understand why we even did this. Gave them a thirty years and then add it on and add it on. That's our land, the people of the city's land. And talk about losing money. We were getting a hundred and twenty-five thousand a year, clear back in two thousand and two, from the county to maintain the park. I have a record of in, in two thousand and twelve, the college paid us approximately twenty-seven thousand dollars for the use of that land for maintenance, seven percent. What are they paying now? What have they been paying? Who knows? Who gets free away? How are they going to get what they've invested, they say? You're supposed to be on a lease. You make improvements on a lease, you don't get anything back. Please look at it. It's coming up next month. We're going to submit it and then after that, see what the, the Park Service says. Hopefully, they're looking out for us. But we, as a city, should have. Thirty-seven years later, their lease isn't up till November of two thousand and nineteen. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Barbara. Gilbert Zamora Jr., followed by Madeline Spencer and Alex Laught.
Good evening, City Council. Well, since you left, Mayor Polito, since you're not here, and Mayor Protem Martinez. On behalf of myself, I'm a parishioner at St. Joseph and also a fellow knight. I think we walked with you, the cities, the last time you were there. Still going, want to follow up, follow up with you guys regarding the liability situation that we have possibly still regarding the crossing guard, us crossing with the fellow parishioners and city members of the area. We've been noticing there's been, there's still been a lot of traffic that's going around still through masks and stuff like that. Even with the presence of the police officers that's been there, it's been very helpful. They went out, they gave out the, they were with the motorcycle, you know, community outreach, which was great. There was a lot of good response from the, from the fellow parishioners. And actually, Father Efrain gave a good response to it. He really liked it and really pushed a lot of it. And he's been actually making a good notice as far as doing masks during the, during the, you know, towards the end of the beginning announcements and stuff like that. He also submitted a letter which I gave to the clerk this evening. This is on behalf of Father Efrain Flores. This is Mayor Miguel Polito, San Ana City, San Ana City Council. Regarding requested traffic light at the crossing of Lacy Street and Civic Center Drive. Dear Mayor Miguel, dear Mayor Miguel Polito and members of the city council, let me introduce myself. My name is Father Efrain Flores, pastor of St. Joseph Church. I hope and pray that this letter finds you and your family well. I take this opportunity to express my gratitude for all, for all that you do for our city. Thank you for the council, for all that you do. On June seventeenth, two thousand and seventeen, at five P.M., excuse me, after the five P.M. masks, around six nineteen P.M. at the intersection of Lacy and Civic Center Drive, we had an incident that ended in tragedy. A member of our community, Ms. Charlene Hanson, as you guys are all aware of, was hit by a car and later she died that evening. Mayor Miguel Polito and members of the city council, I come with you at, to a request, requesting light at the crosswalk of Lacy and Civic Center Drive. This traffic light will help to protect and save the lives of our children, seniors, parishioners and members of our community. This crosswalk is very busy and is used by children from two different schools as well as the church and community members. In the past, we've had accidents at this intersection and fortunately did not result into these fatalities. Ms. Charlene Hanson was a very old, a very active member in our community. We made this, we made this request because we do not want to lose any, any more life. I know the city, city has many needs. I see this, I see this one request for a traffic light as high priority. Please consider supporting us in this urgent need for our community from Bush until the, from Bush until the end of Civic Center. We have only two stops, which causes many cars to speed by the school and church. Look forward to your response to your request. Also, I look forward to the opportunity, meeting with you in the future. Yours in Christ, Father Efrain Flores.
Thank you, Mr. Zamora.
Do I know the red lights on? If you just give me one more second. She was very, very helpful in the community. A very kind lady, as you always have known. And I think my fellow knight down here, Dan, mentioned last time he was here, we have never seen, I was then didn't have the opportunity to be there for her funeral. But from what I heard, what the funeral consisted of is, is, it's just insane. I mean, it's just, it was beautiful. The, the many lives that she touched. I mean, it's unheard of, you know? Talk about service to your community. She was a service to the community. I mean, we can't have people like that just because of carelessness, people that are actually driving around the area. The day we had the walk-through, we had the suburban laws flying around. The other day, Sunday, we had a, Friday, we had a meeting Friday night. Sure enough, a guy was peeling out. I mean, where can we be deputized or do something? We can take the license plate number of the vehicles that are doing, report it to the city. What can we do to be able to make it better and make it safer? That's the whole thing. We know it's, you can't be there all the time everywhere in the city, but where can, as citizens, do something to be able to make it safer? Whether we take license plate numbers, report it to the city, or what can we do as, you know, obedient citizens, which is basically what we're trying to do? How can we reach out to officers, you know, councilmembers, you guys? How we, can we make it actually safer in that, in that aspect? If there's no, I mean, the recourse of actually hunting somebody down, it's like chain them down to hold them till they show up? That, I don't think that's the way to do it. There has to be other types of avenues that we need to be accessible for us to do it, you know, the way we can make it safer for the, I mean, there's a lot more kids in the area. And if the school was just growing, it'll be even bigger, you know? I mean, we don't see this happening over by...
Mr. Zamora, maybe we could talk offline and, and meet with our Public Works Director and our Acting Transportation Coordinator and figure out how we can use some of our training and, and the groups that we're working with to figure out how can we continue to work with you?
Okay.
I know we, we have the crossing guard on the weekends and we have our police going. We need to do more and I definitely understand that and I know you all want to, to roll up your sleeves and help out.
Well, we're actually doing that every Sunday.
Sunday, correct.
Yeah, we're there Sundays.
Yes.
And we appreciate the officer showing up. They come by and they ask, how's it going? And it's, you know, it's great they're there. But I mean, it's like the whole thing, they can't be there all the time. We understand that. But what can we do as a community to be able to make it better? That's what we're asking to do. And that's one thing that Father Efrain's been asking to do.
Correct. Well, we'll coordinate a meeting with our Public Works Director, Fred, and figure out what can we do to, to, to move the needle forward.
Again, thank you very much for your help.
Of course.
And let's make it safer. That's all we can do.
Thank you, sir.
You guys have a good evening.
I just want to mention that there are still those placemaking strategies that do these amazing murals in streets to help traffic slowing. I don't know how we can do that, but like there's a ton of things. One of the things I just wanted to kind of summarize and I didn't finish earlier, but I think that there's cities all over the United States that are using a lot of non-conventional strategies to do things that are finding innovative solutions for cities. And I just want to say that tonight, we've been talking about a couple of different ones, which are, for instance, the jail reuse and also cooperative development in the city. And in looking at those two strategies, the first thing I want to say is regarding Vannier coming in here, I really think that the city needs to do some kind of a problem posing workshop with community. And that means that you actually go in and don't be informational, but you say to them, "Look, here's what we're dealing with, with our jail. These are the monetary issues we're having." And we can bring in experts with those cloud computing experts, we can bring in those people and we can actually crunch the numbers and figure out as a community how we can make up the difference and make money off of what we're doing instead of not having that money. And we need to be able to do that. The other thing is that when we actually bring cooperatives, it has the potential to target a microeconomic market and turn jobs in non-basic sectors, something that normally export-based growth models ignore, into employment that builds individual and collective wealth within communities. And there are millions of places showing that this is done. The Madrigal Corporation is one of the biggest cooperative development federated cooperatives in the world. And the thing is that our city needs to start looking at, in its general plan, its sustainability component, it needs all these policies to be written into that because we're not building this community for yesterday. We're building it for generations that are not even born. And so, I just want to just make clear that we really need to make different moves and we need to have different vision and it needs to happen today with all of you and you're the only ones who can do that.
Thank you, Madeline. Appreciate that. Next, we have city manager comments followed by city council member comments. Madam City Manager?
Just two things I wanted to alert the council of. The body worn camera program, there's been questions about implementation and the chief has let me know that the training is beginning this month and implementation will be in September. And also, this Saturday is the Downtown Santa Ana Art Walk, vendors and live music in the Arts Village Promenade and everyone is invited. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's start off with Councilmember Sarmiento. Make our way.
I'll be brief since the lights just went on. See, somehow you missed turning it on on some, just kidding. We'll all abide, but we, we'll all have mental clocks inside as we speak from now on. But I just simply wanted to say, you know, we did have a good discussion on the repurposing and on the study and the follow-up on the U.S. Marshals opportunity to go ahead and work with them to stop some of the bleeding that we have there at the, at the jail. And I know that it's been, it's a difficult problem that we have and I think Mayor Protem's comments are well taken. You know, it was something that was entered into a long time ago, but now we find ourselves with a, you know, large deficit problem as a result of some contracts that were severed and there'd be nothing better than I'd find or that I could hope for than a long-term binding contract with a tenant. But that not being available to us and we have to work with what we have. I think that the repurpose study is important for us to continue pursuing and we do that concurrently with having this sort of stopgap solution to have the U.S. Marshals come in. That was never something that was, you know, off topic. I remember mentioning that and I've had meetings with the U.S. Marshals when I knew that the contract with ICE was being compromised, not because of any social or political reasons, but because I know they had some problems with the condition of some of the inmates and the medical treatment that they were receiving. So, that's been a work in progress and it just happened to be coincidental that the proposal came before us because of their facility that's being built. And it'll give us time to be more thoughtful in some of the opportunities that we have to repurpose the jail. Even if we were to select anything, you know, it's going to take time for us to, you know, implement it and rehab the facility. So, during that time, I think we can be more intelligent, more thoughtful about seeing what are realistic feasible options for that, for that facility. You know, we see things like a lot of changes in our, you know, in, in our environment, opportunities that are going to be, you know, bypassing some of our residents. You know, work is being automated, you know, there's artificial intelligence, data analytics and just a lot of changing technology and maybe that facility can be that space where we can talk about that changing economy and how we get our residents to leapfrog maybe some of the boundaries and some of the obstacles that they have to, you know, prepare themselves for that work, you know, for the next, for the next few years. So, you know, looking at smart cities, looking at, you know, development, wealth creation for our residents is very important. So, that's where I see that space becoming. But in the meantime, we need to make sure that we have enough resources to provide services for our residents now. So, with that, I'll say goodnight.
Thank you, Councilmember Sarmiento. Jose Solorio.
Thank you. A few of us attended the Wiltshire Square Neighborhood Association Twenty-First Summer Concert. It was amazing. We had a good time. The music was good and people stayed up and danced the night away and it was... The music was good, and people stayed up and danced the night away, and it was, it was a job well done. I know some of the audience were there too, and congratulations to all the organizers. One thing I forgot to say on the worker cooperative item because of the red light was something related, but just as important that we needed to look at is the cost of a business license in Santa Ana are too high. The application is too complicated, needs to be simplified. I think maybe if we could figure out where the revenue is the same, but would create more categories or options, I think that might be helpful. I know I have a business license myself in town, and so I know what the fees are, and we all get complaints from folks on how it's substantially less than other cities. And so, whether you're a cooperative or a small business, or a home-based business, or a micro enterprise, that's a concern as well because you also got to pay that annually. So, we ought to look at that. And I don't know if it's part of the revenue study we're looking at that, but when we look at the issue of cooperatives and things like that, maybe that's an opportunity to look at the categories and types and amounts. Also, I've received word from my Historic Resources Commissioner and others that with the potential lapsing of the Historic Registry Program that we had that discounted some of those fees, that there's a backlog because the person that was in charge has left, and so there's this queue. There's people that have been trying to apply, but it's been hard to get any answers, that there's an interest in seeing if it can't be, the current program can't be continued another three to six months. I don't know if that could be done administratively, or if that needs to come back to the council, but I'd like staff to please explore that. Finally, I do want to thank my colleague, Councilmember Viegas, for bringing forward the issue of domestic violence, because it's an issue that a lot of folks don't like to talk about. But I know there's a lot of trauma, there's a lot of harm, a lot of hurt in our community because of domestic violence, and it affects more families than we think. And so, bringing attention to it and hopefully one day making, come alive a domestic violence Family Justice Center, as the council member proposing, is a solid idea, so I commend him on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Solorio. Councilman Viegas.
Thank you, Mayor Potem Martinez. I'd like to echo the councilmember Solorio was saying about the turnout over at the Woolshire Square. It was, it was a great event, great turnout. Also, I agree with the business licenses being a little too high. I remember I was paying $75 for a business license in Irvine. I came here following year, and it was $200. So, definitely needs to be looked at. Also, real quick, not too long ago, there was a fentanyl overdose or fentanyl tragedy that took place off of Fairview, and I want to commend OCFA Chief Black. Get that down to the troops over there. What a great job that they, they did. This is something, I don't know if you hear about it in the news, but fentanyl is very toxic, it's really strong narcotics, very cheap. They're mixing it with heroin. So, we had one deceased in that event that took place. They had to do the hazmat out there. They had to do the whole works, evacuate people from the building because that, that stuff can get in the air and it'll hurt you, possibly kill you. That is what our law enforcement community and the firefighters are dealing with now. So, I commend you for the good work. Please be safe. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Councilman Viegas. Before I adjourn this meeting, I'll just make some, just brief comments. I also wanted, you know, and we talked about Woolshire Square, but also thank Henninger Park for their amazing fair that they had, and I think it was their first, and good job well done out there. I, I had the opportunity to go out there and saw the bike rodeo with SAS and put it on Facebook. It's really cool to see the various folks out there, even folks from different neighborhoods come and support Henninger Park. And so, I just thought that, that was fantastic. And of course, Woolshire Square always has a great concert, and so it's always fun to attend, and especially now that I live in that neighborhood, and it's great to get to know a lot of the, of my neighbors and go out there and sit with them. So, it's been fun. The other, you know, we've been talking about the worker cooperatives, but, you know, we put an economic strategic plan that's still in draft mode. And I know that we at the Chamber of Commerce, other working groups, that were discussing business license and business fees. Well, what do we do with all that information? Did we add any steps that were going to come to this council? Was it put in this economic strategic plan draft? Because this is such, when we talk about economic development, this is what we're talking about, worker cooperatives, you know, small business. We talked about, you know, issues as pertains to business license fees. I just never saw that. I just met with folks from the Chamber of Commerce just yesterday and, you know, talked to them about branding our, our economic strategic plan and how, what can we do to move all these things forward? And so, it seems that we're, we're up here asking, and so maybe we can bring back this economic strategic plan that is, I'm not sure if it's in draft form, it's formalized. I'm a little confused. It was never brought back to committee, but it was brought here. So, I'm, I'm a little lost.
I'll give you a quick update, and then we certainly will come back. We're relooking at the strategy. We think it needs updated. We think that Santa Ana has taken on some new initiatives in working with where we see our economy going, and that the plan doesn't reflect those very well. So, it's not ready to come back yet. We think we need to add some things. I do have to admit that I have not delved in or actually heard about the discussion on business license fees. Let me get more informed about that and talk to the chamber about what work they were doing, and then maybe we can tie the two together.
Fantastic. Great. Thank you. The other thing that I, I know we have an upcoming event, and maybe Madeline, you could give me the date. I know for the first time in the city, you know, with the sponsorships, and we did a lot of sponsorships today, but we approved sponsorship for, for a young student who is back from college, from Tough University, that is going to be doing some coding, teaching our residents how to code. And I've been talking about data analytics, the new digital revolution, and this young man is going to be at Garfield Elementary Center, and I think the first one is August 19th, and then the second opportunity, August 26th. And so, I want to encourage our residents, and there's a link out there, and maybe I'll send it to our, our staff so that we can forward to our neighborhood associations and put it out there. But, you know, as we talk about employment, essentially, we're moving in that direction, and we want to make sure we prepare our, not only our young students, but those that, who are in the, in the world of the working environment that in many respects only have a job because they're trying to make ends meet. And there are many of my friends that I know that went and got educated and, and, you know, are underemployed and are looking to navigate into different fields, and so this is definitely a good one. And so, I think coding has been around for a very long time, but more, more so, companies are moving in that direction and certainly need folks with that, with those kinds of training and, and skills to help them move upward with upward mobility. The next thing that I would just also state from regional boards, I sit on SCAG, and I know times that we want to get out of here, but it's the appropriate time for us to give updates on the regional boards that we sit on and also the council committees. And it's rare that I hear my colleagues who chair the council committees or sit on regional boards give updates to, to the public. I do my best to provide my update on my newsletter to send that out. And so, I just wanted to state very quickly on SCAG, and, and we're doing a pilot, and I know our staff finally has given the information about the 30,000-plus businesses that we have in the city. SCAG is doing a pilot in partnership with Wallace Walrod to look at our business licenses and really get information and data so that, it's not for Santa Ana, but it is for the SCAG region as we try to move forward with data analytics. And I'm the chair of the Open Data, Big Data Committee, but they're focused on Santa Ana and these 30,000 businesses and getting as much information as we possibly can, what kind of small businesses do we have, what, what are the sectors? What are the sectors that are growing? How much revenue? We talk about retail, and we know that retail is changing, and so how we look at land use and zoning and parking. And so, we're going to have a lot of vacant spaces as, as many malls are starting to close down and other major stores. And so, we have to start looking at our small businesses and how can we continue to cultivate them and help them and help them grow. And so, this information is going to be very, I believe, very valuable, not just for Santa Ana, but for the Southern California region, and how we could actually look at possible policy decisions as it pertains to land use and zoning and, and some of the growth sectors within small business. And so, I'm excited about that. It should be coming, they're underway getting the, the data, and hopefully, it'll be coming to the SCAG General Council in a couple months, and then hopefully, presentation here to Santa Ana to share the results of the 30,000-plus businesses that we have here. I really want to move our city into data analytics in figuring out how can we use the information that we have here? It's power. We have a lot of information, and, and, you know, we talk about public acts requests and the, and the amount of time that not only our clerk's office, our city manager's office is taking, is that we got to get that information out there publicly so that we could utilize our staff to, to, to do other things. And so, it's one step at a time. I definitely understand that, and so I just wanted to share that and as well. Lastly, on the Orange County Council of Governments, you know, I'm not sure where we go, and it's tied to the, to SCAG, but this is the body that essentially helps with the RDP and the SES here at the regional level and the planning that we're, we're doing. I sit there, we have an alternate, there are times where I can't because there's conflict. I have conflicting meetings because I sit on too many boards, and so I'm just going to ask my colleagues, and I'm coming back now that I'm drawing down on my 16 months. I'm going to have to remove myself from other boards, and so I'm hopeful that you all can step up because it's coming to that time, and, and I'm just spread out. And, and with my 16 months left, I, I have to phase out, and so I just wanted to just state that to you all. So, just for you all to keep that in mind, in the next couple months, I will be bringing to the clerk what I can sit on and what I can't sit on anymore. And it would, it's important for us to sit on these boards, not only from a perspective that, you know, we're at the table, we're making, there's folks that are making regional decisions on behalf of our city, and we have to be at the table or we're going to be on the menu. And so, it's imperative for us to, to consider that. And then, lastly, just want to adjourn, adjourn this meeting. The next scheduled meeting is for August 15, 2017, at 5:00 PM. And I want to also adjourn this meeting in memory of Ortenia Arcisa and Jerry Clay Aries. So, if you could take a moment of silence and adjourn this meeting? Have a good evening.